Councilmember Rivas.
Here.
Councilmember Bozick. Councilmember Brickner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jefferson.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Present.
And Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Six present.
All right, so here we go, final, final day of third reading. We've got a lot in front of us. Did have a request to shuffle around a little bit before we get going. I think every year he pulls the same trick on me and I fall for it. What is it, West Porter Township Fire? So if you want to come on up, we'll get you in and out of here. Before we get into the fun. So if you want to flip.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, he comes up with the same story and I always heard it before.
Wait a minute.
Wait a second, then you pull this last.
He's puning my integrity here, but he's letting me do this.
Cannot complain.
We are, this is Chuck Murray, our chairman, we are an appointed board. And because of that, our budget goes through you. You have a couple like these, I think. We work with the auditor's office and it gets submitted to you. We are basically the conduit through which the tax dollars pass to fund the fire protection and ambulance service in the Porter County side of Lake of the Four Seasons. We have no employees, we basically just enter into a contract with, what's the name of the volunteer fire?
Uh, West Porter Township Fire Protection District.
West Porter Township.
It started out, it was,
The fire.
Lake City Four Seasons when it started out.
Lake of the Four Seasons Fire Force.
Kind of branched out now into part of Porter Township. And we cover by contract, Winfield, the town of Winfield, and Winfield Township. So we've got like a three-legged stool out there. We're all supporting each other and trying to keep, this fire department keeps expanding and getting bigger naturally because the area we cover is more dense and there's a lot more calls.
All right.
No, districts and territories, I think, are the way to go, in my opinion, in the future of fire protection, ambulance service, so. But anyways, in front of you, you've got $147,720 for their general fund. It's a $6,500 increase. It's like 500 in legal, 6,000 in contractual.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, second discussion.
Can I just explain, explain the increases on the legal and the consultants?
Well.
We have had, we've had work we've had to do because there's been a thought of converting to a fire territory instead of a fire protection district. And that's required some drafting of some things and working with the other two communities on the Lake County side, so we had a little more work on that than we normally would. And then we try to give as much as we can every year to the Lake of the Four Seasons Volunteer Fire Force. They need equipment and supplies and all that kind of stuff to provide for the ambulances and to fight fires.
So how far along are you on the fire territory discussion?
Um, we got to the point where there was legislation drafted and submitted in the past session of the legislature. It did not get a hearing. So it's hard to tell at this point. As Chuck alluded to, we also deal with on the Lake County side, Winfield, the town of Winfield and Winfield Township, putting the three units together to form a territory is the goal.
All right, hopeful.
It seems to be an intricate process.
We're, we're certainly in favor of it, but we're dealing with other players in all of this.
We're kind of the small section of the three different groups. We are the smallest, so we have minimum influence on what the other two groups do. And we're just trying to accommodate everybody and continue with what we've been doing. Working as a fire department for that area.
Thank you.
How about the, that was the legal, how about the consultants?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
How about the consultants?
A $6,000 increase.
We don't have any consultants.
Well, it says six, there, the line item there, it's $135,500.
Went up $6,000.
That's the contract we have with the volunteer fire department.
It's an annual contract. We paid out installments, we have a minimum amount of meetings during the year. We try to more or less distribute that so they use it frugally by paying it out quarterly. So we pay them one-fourth of the contract for each quarter that we go through. In the beginning of each quarter, they're already begging for money that they are running out, so we try not to withhold. Try to keep as much money flowing to them without more or less, and we're trying to maintain, we're kind of like a fallback group too as far as their maintenance budget. They have a very minimal maintenance budget for their, for their equipment. So anytime they have a big item come up, which it seems like there's one every year, at least one, and we more or less are backing them up on requests for, for main, heavy maintenance. Like runs into $20,000, $30,000 on a, on a fire truck very easily. To bring it up to what they need, they have to pass annual inspection every year with their trucks. So sometimes the trucks fall into disrepair. Basically, I don't know that much about that part because we try to stay out of the firefighting part of it. We're more or less, they come to us if they need something and we let them run their own department, basically. And they seem to have done a pretty good job of it.
Yeah, so that's the contract Sylvia, that's just consultants, that's what they pay. Wes, Wes Porter pays to Lake of the Four Seasons. So any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All in the same sign, here's their capital outlays, capital, what is it, capital cumulative development every, so $94,085.
Motion.
Motion, second discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
See you, man.
I'd stay around.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Liar.
Thirty-two years.
All right, um, so highway. Come on up. So as we really dive in, I know this isn't one of them, but Vicki, I think we left at $520,000. Do you have a number of what we are if we followed the recommendation from the wage committee to go halfway to midpoint, minimum 3,000? Where we're at with what we really have to cut starting today? If we don't start, I'm not sure what we're going to do.
Okay, and we're focusing on the general fund, what we need to cut. We did incorporate the changes that were suggested from the, the departments that responded to your request to look at the budgets. We had, that included what I proposed at the budget hearing last week and a cut by JDC and by Circuit Court. And those were the only departments that we heard from. So we still need to cut from the general fund $484,742. That does not include any of the budgets that are coming before you with increases. That's assuming they're like flat line.
Doesn't include known increases?
So includes no increases, yeah. So if we were to include those increases, then we're up to about $680,000 that we would need to cut going forward. From the general fund.
There you have it. Still about a million, million short, so. Got about a half million dollars, Jim?
If I did, we'd do more paving.
All right, Jim. So local roads and street in front of you, looks like there's a $225,000 increase you got for motor vehicles, salt.
Yeah, the salt, increasing price. Motor vehicles, we had to order a new lowboy tractor. And then also bucket truck, so those should be coming in hopefully with, the bucket truck, they told us 12 to 24 months. Lowboy tractor should be in middle of the summer. And then also our boom more, the transmission's out net, so it's going to the repair shop over the winter. And if, it's 18 years old, so if they cannot get parts for the transmission, we have to replace the boom more, and that's $200,000, so.
Got a number in front of you of $1,805,000 for local roads and street.
And just as a note, that's back up to what it was before COVID. You know, our but, our income revenue from the state had really dove off during COVID. So now this is back up to what it was pre-COVID, so that's also why the increase is there.
So the state has given you more money?
Well, we're still receiving the same percentages, but ours is all off gas tax. And when COVID happened and they shut everything down, nobody was driving. And obviously, we're budgeting from the past year.
Okay.
But isn't the increase of the gallon of gas helping too now?
Uh, we're getting a little bit more. About $10,000 a month, I think, is about what the increases we've been getting, so.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Carry it on.
Motion a second, further discussion? Keep going.
Going the wrong way, guys.
Well, this isn't general funds, so this doesn't.
Okay, you're right.
All come from the state fundsies too, so. Any further discussion? All in favor of the $1.8 million, $1,805,000, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Highway. Looks like there's an increase of $513,866. Varies throughout, see if you can see.
Yeah, that again brings us back up to what our budget was roughly before it got slashed from the COVID. I put in extra for bituminous and aggregate, hope that gets us started towards chip seal for next year. And we increased contractual just due to the copier costs are going up this year and then also Hoosier Fire, the price for fire extinguishers has gone up on contractual.
And Jim, in your letter, you state that this is, bituminous is where you can, you think that you can pull the raises from?
If we need to, correct. But there is still plenty, we have 3.2 million roughly, I think, in, in cash reserves and that is what I saw about a week ago. So I'm sure it's a little less because we may have had a pay period since then.
Are you combining 72 and 73?
Both of them together, 1173 and 76.
76, excuse me, yeah.
So there's the restricted in there.
So this is 1176, this is the main highway fund, it has 87,000 cash, so that's go to, excuse me, the restricted fund. Which 3.6 million.
Yeah.
But we need to
Right.
Use the restricted fund.
And that also goes back to COVID when we had partial staff for three months. We weren't able to do restricted work because we were only working part-time and we're still paying people to stay home at that time. So that got us in a big hole and we're slowly getting out of it. The more we spend on bituminous, the better, because that's all restricted.
$4,965,259 in front of you. NVH.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Is this yours, highway? Highway overweight vehicles?
Yeah, that's.
$50,000.
Yeah, same as every year.
$50,000.
Motion.
Second, motion, second discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Bridge, local roads and bridge match grant, million.
That's the million for the CCMG that we get every year from the state.
Motion.
Motion a second discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. I think that's you, right?
Did we do the 144s that we turned in or is that later? Do you have any questions on that while I was here?
There any changes? Did you add changes into them?
Uh, there was one change for years, and I can't answer to why, but the sign foreman was a, they had him as an assistant foreman even though he's in charge of a department, so I just moved him from assistant to a division foreman like the other foremen of the divisions that we have. Then we added 50 cents for the night crew in the wintertime. As an incentive to get guys to step up and run the night shift in the wintertime.
Do we have these in front of us? I'll learn back behind the letters. Say that again, Jim.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Say that again, repeat that.
The 50 cents an hour, just in the wintertime when we run three shifts, that's an incentive for guys to work the 3 to 11 and the midnight shift. So it just gives them an extra 50 cents so we can get, it's hard to get volunteers for that one. And then I added in part-time hourly up to $20 an hour. See if in the summertime, we can get some farmers that are in the middle of crops to run our lawnmowers for us on the road and help us free up guys to do other things.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it for the changes on the 144.
And those changes are reflected in amounts for your budget?
Correct.
Did that end?
Yeah, I, I increased the NVH hourly a little bit so that if we do get part-timers to come in.
What did you say about changing the name? Description, I thought you said something about.
I do.
Well, when we redid the, restructured back in, I think we originally started it right before COVID started, but then we implemented it back in the spring. So I had in the past four assistant foremen and three division foremen, but now I've got, we got, we created four divisions, so the one guy that was receiving assistant foreman's pay, I'd like to him to just be moved up to division foreman. But the bottom line of employees all stays the same.
But you'll have five division foremans?
No, four.
Okay, that's what it's reflecting now.
Yeah, the sign, the sign foreman in the past, for some reason, was paid assistant foreman wage instead of regular foreman.
All right. Is everybody okay with those changes?
I'll make a motion on those Form 144s.
Second.
Motion, second, further discussion? All in favor of the 144 changes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Any further discussion? I think that's it for you, right?
That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
What do we got? Two bridge? Hello, hello.
Hello.
All right, there's some changes here, a little bit.
Make the motion.
There's a motion.
Second.
Was there a second?
There was.
Motion, second discussion.
This is where I also talk about the 144.
I don't know. $250,000 consultants, is that up? Consultants, what are we doing there?
Bridge fund. We have currently 13 bridges. They're in the process of being designed for replacement. And we also just completed a small structure report. Small structure being anything that spans eight feet to just under 20 feet. On that, and we were told that four of those structures needs immediate attention, meaning replacement. Three of those four structures, looking at the hydrology already for it, we realize are going to become bridge structures. So our bridges are going to go from 132 probably to 135 after this is complete. So we are going to have four more under design, so that's the reason for the consultant up because we do have a lot of projects going.
All right, and what, you said you want to discuss salaries a little bit or you just switch some things around?
Um.
Not seeing a change in salaries, right?
We did, we're changing the county engineer to county engineer slash assistant director. We would like to request that.
Yep.
The executive assistant was moved totally underneath the bridge department, that is the person that keeps me straight and going with the books and everything, that all the projects that are going on. And then we are requesting for a right-of-way engineer on that. And the reason for the right-of-way engineer is because of the small structures that we were looking at on that. That was the first time we did that kind of a report in detail concerning the smaller structures, and we've got a number of them around the county, and we just need somebody to stay on top of that.
And is this right, right-of-way engineer going in the bridge fund?
Yes. Because essentially, we do have the agreement with the highway department that anything that spans eight feet or greater on that with small structures, we will pay for it through bridge.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, all in the same sign. What do we got, plan commission?
Point of clarification?
What, yeah.
Did you just approve that 144 with the new employee?
I believe that was, is that the will?
Is that a new employee?
It would be a new employee, yes.
Was the motion by the way, approving the 144 too? Or just the budget?
And a special raise.
Is there a
Take that one out.
Form 144 sheet
Sorry.
Closed, is there a 144 sheet here or is it in your?
I had it, I emailed it out to Jeremy as far as that went, as far as the discussion I had after we found out.
Didn't go further, I didn't forward it further.
Okay.
So you never got it to Vicki? I did, if that was.
Yeah, we have it.
You have it?
Yeah.
All right, the purpose of your question, Vicki, just trying to clarify that.
I just wanted to clarify if we're doing special raises at this point and new people or if we're waiting on personnel-related items.
Well, I mean, we've dealt with some personnel already, I know, I can reflect back to veterans affairs, I mean, I know. I mean, it's up to you guys, I mean, we've started the process.
Who made the original motion?
So Mike, I think Mike and Greg maybe seconded it? So. All right, so yeah, let's just hit it then, the new employee is, you said the right-of-way, right?
Right-of-way engineer.
All right. And that's at how much?
85,000.
85?
Benefits are included in that too.
All right, and Vicki, you're speaking of a special raise and what, what was that?
It would be for the executive assistant and the special raise, oh boy. It's 7,970. Now, this person is in the wage study, so we'd need to get guidance on what to do.
All right.
If we get to the wage study.
Wait for the wage study.
All right, let's wait on that, we'll throw that in there. So the executive assistant?
The executive assistant was done based off of the wage study, yes.
Okay. All right, so right now he's asking for the new employee, the right-of-way engineer. I think you guys heard the, the explanation. This is a growing department, this isn't, you guys remember the, the bridge fund went up last year, the bridge rate. It's part of the infrastructure we've been talking about, this is a tax department, so.
What are you saying?
Yeah, my motion concurs, he's, is in agreement.
Your motion's in agreement, Greg?
Yeah, well, I was second.
For the new employee. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the right-of-way engineer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign and we'll deal with the, the raise. Remind us.
Next week.
We'll, we'll remember.
Right. Well, if we get to the wage study, then whatever's in the wage study will be more or less automatically flowing to your budgets. So since they're not addressing any kind of special raises until the end.
Sure.
Because we're not sure we're going to get to the wage study because we've got 400 more to cut.
We're going up.
Well, this doesn't affect that, so. All right, plan commission, I think we're good?
Plan commission.
What do you got? $45,166? Increase in
Well, with our one of the things that the main thing is, is we just, on the 144, we made some changes as far as titles. The assistant director is now the planning zoning manager. Building administrators, which were, there are two of them, are permit license specialist one, also specialist two. And then the county engineer has been changed to county engineer slash assistant director.
So just some restructuring in here, right?
Right, so I mean, we just changed those to match the wage study that was done. I shouldn't say that with the county engineer, the county engineer, we added the assistant director part two.
Bottom line of the plan commission is $928,393.
Bob, the, the increase in the medical life insurance, is that?
We have more person, people than in the office that are going to be taking the insurance next year. And they've already told me that. We've only have, I think out of all of our employees up there, we only have now going into next year, two that will not take insurance.
How many more are taking it next year?
Both of them are in the plan commission fund. One. I believe two in the plan commission.
And is that $12,000, does that reflect what a employee's insurance would cost?
It's 19,380 is each contribution from these departments.
Yeah, so that, that's what I was thinking, that's why I was curious to know what the 12,000, $13,000 increase is going to do for you.
Are these people who are paid out of other funds?
I'd have to go back and ask Beth. We tried to get it so that way we didn't ask for half of the benefits being paid out of one budget versus the other budget, so what we tried to do is zero the person into a particular budget, like I think I might have gone in the cumulative to bridge fund.
Yeah, you, you divided it, right.
Right. So, I mean, we'd like to, you know, double check me please.
Say that again.
So, I mean, I just asked Vicki, please double check me on that.
We'll double check that.
So, I mean, I only have two people out of the office I know of that will not be taking insurance next year. The remaining of the department is taking the insurance. I know of two people, I think, or one, definitely one person that is going on the insurance next year, and she was not on it this year.
And salaries, you're moving, you're moving Christie completely into the plan commission?
Completely into the plan commission.
And is that a salary change or is that just?
That's just staying right where she's at right now.
So there's 928,393, was there a motion, a second?
Motion.
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 I'll second it.
Second, further discussion? 144 just stays the same then?
Other than just some name changes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Stormwater. It's like it's down 9,900. $1.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second.
Can I talk about the 144? I do have another request in there. And the biggest one with that is going to be, well, two new positions we were requested, these were from a plan that Mike Novatny had been asking people about, and those two new positions in there, field technician and stormwater asset manager. The field technician was to be actually going out and reviewing construction, so that way we're not having an engineer out there with the contractor. we're not having an engineer out there with the contractor the whole time viewing it. We would have a Field Technician out there doing the work and in contact with our engineer, which our engineer here is Chelsea. The Stormwater Asset Management Plan would be doing, just as the title says, developing an asset management plan over for all of our regulated drain and our infrastructure that we have, just like what we do in Highway Engineering with the roads and the bridges. We have asset management plans for those, and that's where we were able to go through and do our priorities on what projects we need to go forward with. So, we're requesting that within the Stormwater. The other-
They're in here, right? They're not in this 144 right now, though, are they?
I think that's the later one I sent out. The other change I'm asking for is with the Stormwater Engineer, the Staff Engineer of Stormwater. Would like to move that position up to be the actual Program Manager, and that is Chelsea Gordon, who is sitting here with me. She is the Staff Stormwater Engineer, and the reason for that change is because we do have three other sections, the Development Engineering Section that reviews all of the new development that comes in, basically at the Plan Commission level. We also have the Highway Engineer on that. Both of those, within the wage study, have been pretty much been put equal on that, because they manage those particular sections. I want to move Chelsea up to be in the Manager of the Stormwater, so that way, the County Engineer is not the manager. The County Engineer can actually look over all three sections in the engineering and be able to manage three sections, instead of having to focus predominantly their time in the Stormwater section, which is what happened. So, I'm requesting that we take the Staff Stormwater Engineer position and actually move Chelsea up to a Manager position, equivalent to the Highway Engineer in the Development Review Engineer, Assistant County Engineer.
So, you wanna, okay, so, you wanna hire a position so that the engineer is not out there in the field, and then you wanna move this position up higher, then who's gonna fill that engineering spot that she had, would possibly vacate then?
We would be scratching that particular engineering position.
So, we're deleting a position?
If we move up to the Program Manager, we're asking for the Stormwater Engineer. That position would not be vacant. It would basically be elevating that position to the Program Manager.
So, this new position to oversee what the engineer used to do, if the engineer was not there, what would the engineer be doing?
So, currently, I handle the in-house design for our projects, so those projects that I am out in the field observing the construction. If the Field Technician is there, then I would be able to focus on further design of projects or managing other projects within the office, rather than spending eight to ten hours a day out on the construction site.
Is there that much overseeing in the office that you, I mean, does it take eight hours a day to do that stuff?
Yes.
I mean, we're just trying to figure out, you know, you wanna add a couple of positions, and everybody wants positions, but our money, we just don't have that much. So, it's almost like-
This isn't general-
You really, really need it, I guess would be my question, you know, 'cause-
Yes, this isn't general fund. This is the Stormwater fee. And to also understand what the Stormwater Manager would look after, MS4 program that's going on, and the IDM rules that are coming down with the new program that we're gonna have to be developing with MS4, the complaints that we receive, going through those, managing those, overseeing that system and everything, there's a number of items to coordinate within it. It's just not designed.
So, when we started building this department, when was it?
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. I mean, it was a complete, it was a new build-up department when we went to the Stormwater fee and built it out, and then it became, you know, Planning, Stormwater. It's just things that we're now doing in-house that we used to contract out, and I think if you guys can see, this is why I've got no problem with it, is, and this is Stormwater, what are we doing in Carriage Hill? What did we do in South Haven? What do we have to do in Lake of the Four Seasons? We didn't have departments back twenty, thirty years ago to oversee all this stuff, to review the plans, to oversee the construction. I mean, and this is what we're doing. We just approved another seven million dollars, you know, for more Stormwater. It's, I'm not gonna walk away whenever, in a year, two, or four years, and have people blame me twenty years down the road for not, you know, allowing us to fix this infrastructure.
To give you an idea too, Chelsea already has probably better than two million dollars of projects lined up outside of ARPA funds that you released. These are other projects we've got going within subdivisions, and we only have one point two million dollars to do these projects in. So, I mean, it's, just like bridges, we've got a lot of infrastructure out there that's bad.
County's growing. We all know that.
Do you have a motion in?
What?
Yeah.
There is a motion on, I think, just the Stormwater. There wasn't on the, right? We didn't vote on the, did we vote on Stormwater yet?
No.
None of the positions yet.
So, what do we have outstanding, or let's get this going?
Just the budget at three point nine four million, three point nine four three. That doesn't include the new positions, correct? Or does that include them there?
Well, we kept it exactly the same if we were to be able to grant it those new positions.
Why don't we, the motion is approved at that, why don't we approve it at that? You've got a description, because when we built it, you said the whole thing about Mike finishing the build-out of that department.
Right.
We get that to the council, and then when we get into the final reading, then let them see what the final build-out is, right? This is the final build-out of your guys' department?
Is this the final build-out of it?
On the Stormwater-
I'm not gonna make any kind of promises on that.
That's what I hear, I mean, every year.
I really don't know. I mean, we are getting to the level where we feel comfortable, but, I mean, we had two bridges fail this year.
I understand. I'm very proud of what we have accomplished, you know, in the county.
We've got a bridge and road that's totally closed, and we're scrambling with a consultant now to try to get plans done to get this road open. I mean, it's inconveniencing people, but the bridge can't carry loads. I mean, there's a lot of things we're trying to do.
They just said we vote on the, the motion is for the, I think it was for the three million nine hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred sixty-three. It doesn't include the-
It does not include any special raises, correct?
It doesn't include, yes. This is just, as is right now. He's gonna get us the final kind of build-out of the summary, and we'll take that, you know, under consideration in final reading, the final build-out, or at least the-
Final reading, that's next Tuesday.
The eighteenth, I think it is.
Next Tuesday.
Yep. So, further discussion? All in favor of the three million nine hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. You'll get that to the rest of the council.
I will try to get it by, hopefully, Thursday.
We'll take it up next Tuesday. Unsafe Buildings, two hundred thousand, same?
Yes.
Second. Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Drain Maintenance, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is the old ditch fee, right? Is this, is that what that is?
Correct.
Just-
Change.
Seven hundred sixty thousand dollars, was there a motion?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Stormwater Construction, is that fund?
Construction Fund, that's the bond fund.
Two million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand.
Yes.
Motion.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Highway Engineering Fund, up five thousand. Data Processing Equipment, a hundred sixty thousand.
Motion.
Motion. Second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Trail Fund, twenty thousand, five hundred.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
I guess, like-
We'll get there.
Yeah, I'll have that-
Just fix everything, would you, for us? All the infrastructure out there?
Yeah, I'll have everything to you guys Thursday. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Oh, that's right.
We got E-911.
Hello.
So, they have basically, what, three separate funds? You guys kind of, this is your, the statewide E-911 Fund, it's two million, two hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
You have some foundation here.
Yeah, there's foundation, and there's some of the Commissioner's budget, I think, right? That's where we pay, so.
I'll make the motion for discussion.
Demotion?
Second.
Second, for discussion. Forty thousand dollar increase, hourly overtime. I think we began to deal with the overtime a little bit in our last meeting, short-staffed.
So, let me ask you this, just because I'm not certain how or where we're at at this point. The salaries of, that are budgeted, it's the same amount, you know, which is, I think that was the instructions, is to put the same amount. But the two million forty-six thousand, eight seventy-nine, is that, that's for how many operators?
That's for twenty-eight first-class telecommunicators, four assistant supervisors, four shift supervisors, and then our administration.
And, so, twenty-eight's the big number, and how many do you have currently?
Total, we have twenty-seven. We actually had one leave today to go to the railroad. So, we're twenty-seven total right now, and that's including our eight supervisors.
So, kind of what I'm getting at, if you're fully staffed, so all those positions are filled, which you're budgeting for, would you not have less hourly and less overtime as a result of that?
Yes. Hourly, actually, this past year was the largest, the most robust hourly budget that we needed, actually, because we had six people in our part-time budget. Two have come back full-time. So, I was going to tell you that the part-time budget I can keep as what we had budgeted for 2022. So, if you'd like to remove that, I can stay at the 2022, which was-
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand.
I have it right here. Yes, mhm. Overtime, I, with where we are right now, I think it's, we're gonna get in this spot where we have such a rotating staff right now. People are coming, people are going. It's pretty fluid. I just foresee us needing to access, have more money in our overtime budget.
Yeah, that's even if you're fully staffed?
If we were fully staffed, we wouldn't need, because we wouldn't have the need for so much overtime.
So, if you're spending more money in overtime, does that mean you're spending less than salaries?
Yes.
Yes. I'd like to note that in the 2022 budget, I was not here, but budget for 2022, there were seven positions that were removed. We had six first-class telecommunicator positions that were removed from the budget and one Administrative Assistant. So, we've already dropped those numbers, and those, that money, which was nearly three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, wasn't appropriated for anything else in the budget.
I believe those were dropped because they were vacant for a long time.
Right.
So, why budget for that?
Right.
Basically.
What is that? I mean, you say that, and what is the optimal staffing level in this county?
Well, you said it, just even in this meeting, Jeremy, that our county is growing. And although we have really good answer times, we are struggling. And so, with public safety, we can't, I'm sure we all agree that we can't jeopardize answer times, we can't jeopardize public safety. And if we aren't, my biggest problem is, we need to, if we're going to train, I kind of made light of this comment, it's almost a Johnny Cochran statement. If we're going to train, we need to retain, because our training is such an extensive process. We are training people, and they're leaving our center highly qualified. And I may become a broken record, but these people are going to industries, and they are top of the stack of viable applicants. That's just as I, sorry, as I stated, we had someone leave today, gave her notice today. She's going to the railroad. I talked to her, and I said, "Tell me why." And she said, "I don't wanna leave, but I need the money." And I'm aware of where we are, but I also think that we've got to, we've got to retain the people that we're training, because they're leaving our centers and they're going. We've had already two now this year go to the railroad. One went to NIPSCO, another one went to the mill. So, if we can, if we can make it more appealing monetarily, I think that will help us retain them.
How much more money did she say she was making at this new job?
She didn't tell me.
So, then we really don't know. It could be five hundred bucks, it could be a thousand, it could be five thousand. So, we're just assuming it's big bucks, because she left, when that might be just one of the small reasons why maybe she left. I'm just saying, without knowing the full answer, I think we wrong to assume the exact reason why they're leaving.
But this employee told us it was for money.
But we don't know how much money. I mean, you know, again, it could be a thousand dollars. That's all I'm saying.
Well, it could be, but definitively, she stated it's money. So, she had no other reason for leaving, so that, to me, leads me to believe that she's going, and she shared with me that this is not, she's gonna be doing manual labor in addition to other things, and-
She might be bad.
Yeah. I would like to see that, but I don't know. I just know that it's a reality. It's not something that I think we're just pulling out of thin air.
You know, and you said it right, Debbie. This is an occurring, ongoing problem with the department, right? It seems like it's been this way for years.
The problem is, people just don't, people don't really understand the demands of a nine-one, it's nationwide. So, I could be sitting in front of every council in the country, making the same argument, because the problem is, our tenured employees are staying there because that's exactly what they are. They're tenured, they're invested here. But our problem is, we're training these people, and they're leaving within a five-year span because they're developing these skills that are appealing to outside agencies and outside entities.
Private sectors.
Yeah. And that's the reality of this. And so, I just think that it's incumbent upon us to do what we can. I presented, Jeremy, and I apologize if I went about this the wrong way. When I, this is my first year, so I'm hoping for a little grace. I presented my budget, and I purposely didn't put in any wages increases, because I was asked not to, and I wasn't aware that I should have provided a 144 prior to tonight. I met with Jeremy beforehand, and I discussed with him where ideally, I'd like to go, I'd like the council to approve the wage increases. I think that that will help us head in the right direction, and, I mean, that's my-
I know. And it should be.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna work our way to the wage discussion at some point, clearly. But I guess what I'm most interested in at this point is to say, the numbers that you budgeted for, so it's the twenty-eight plus the four, that's what you would view as optimum number of employees?
Twenty-eight plus eight-
Right.
For floor, yeah. For supervisors, for assistants, and twenty-eight first-class.
So, that's the number. We just have to get the right people in those spots and get them to stay.
Yes, yes. And we have been, I'm telling you, we have been so very, very fortunate to get some people from Lake County, but if I can segue into just selling Porter County to you in a very real way, Porter County is not huge like Lake County, and we're not a smaller Jasper County. We're in between. So, the dispatchers that come from Porter County are highly skilled. And what I mean by that is, they can multitask like Lake County dispatchers can, and they're learning. These girls that have come on are doing a phenomenal job and picking it up very quickly. But they have very compartmentalized disciplines that they're responsible for daily when they work. They will sit, they will answer phones, and that's their responsibility. They will dispatch police, and that's their responsibility. And when they have that responsibility, they're not answering phones, and they're not dispatching police. It is one responsibility. Because of the size that we are in our staffing, we are doing it all. You can potentially take a call, dispatch that call, stay on the phone with the caller- You can potentially take a call, dispatch that call, stay on the phone with the caller, get responder information, these are all real, everyday responsibilities of a Porter County 911 dispatcher. So in addition to dealing with, I think I mentioned before, when I sat before you, 23 different software applications daily. And that's why it is this hidden profession that people really don't understand the requirements it takes to be a successful dispatcher. So I, I'm coming to you and asking for these things, I think, in a, in a reasonable, from a very reasonable and practical perspective.
So on the, the hourly, you've, uh, basically said that you'll keep it at the 2022 level, which is helpful, so that's 55,000 versus the 75,000 that's listed. And then on the overtime, you, you feel the overtime is, uh, is warranted, it definitely is going to be needed?
I think with our staffing levels, um...
Please stay the way we are now, yes.
Yes, if we stay the way we are now, or we'll be forced to move again, you know, transfer funds, which we had to do recently when I sat before you. So I do think it's warranted.
Vicky, do you have how much we've spent in that line item this year?
Yes, we'll call it up. I've got everything. Okay, so here's their, oops, here's their budget. Yeah, the 119. That's exactly, yeah.
So you're looking at the overtime or the hourly?
Uh, overtime.
It's the 119.
119?
119, 662.
Okay, so out of the appropriation of, well, they had the additional appropriation of 50,000, or the transfer, I should say, um, they've so far spent 119,662.
We may still be, I tried to project, we may still have a surplus of like 12% in there if things are going as they have been through the course of the year.
What's the balance in that?
In the fund?
Yeah.
Okay. What did their... So current balance is 1,443,525, rounded up.
You might remember from the original discussion, this was one of the funds that has been growing with a very large cash balance over the years.
Right. It's, and we've talked, a number of us have had discussions and we talked earlier about moving things into it. And we've talked about, because FICA and PERF is paid out of the general fund, we're looking at ways to free general fund money up for the raises, but... It's what we're dealing with, with some other departments, I actually have fun with it, I call it the Dan Witten rule. It's, you know, where we, we find these funds that are flush with money and we start shoving things in them, and then we ignore them for a couple of years and come back and...
And it won't be sustainable.
Yeah, it's not sustainable. But it's growing until we, we tap into it and make sure it doesn't grow anymore and we deplete it. Our shifting back to the general fund is painful, but it's... When it gets to this point, yeah, I mean, we just got to be careful of what we shift into it, that's also, yeah, it's, you know, we're creating a burn rate when we start shifting more things into it, we're spending more than we're bringing in. And yeah, there's no, there's no hope or, for our legislators to increase that anytime soon, I can't.
No, Debbie actually reached out to the president of the Indiana 911 board, and there's no, nothing in the motions to increase the surcharge.
Not in the foreseeable future for 2023, definitely.
So what are we, so just simple math, what are we bringing in every year? We talked about this, you thought it was about 2 million, right? Is that...
With surcharge, it's been, it fluctuates, and in every October, every month, we get a certain amount deposited, and then in October, we get a larger amount. The executive director of the statewide 911 board also informed me that that's going to be decreasing, unfortunately. But we're, we're right at, um, I mean, that, this is projected, so I can give you hard numbers. In 2019, the surcharge brought in 2.1 million. In 2020, it brought in almost 2.2. 2021, it was not quite, it was 2,480,000. So it does fluctuate, it's all kind of based on, um, it's a, it's the 90, 10 that we get from the state, and then in October, they kind of figure out where they are and what they can give us in excess we, we get in October.
And what do we spend in 150,000, is that what I'm seeing? Oh, no, we're spending, we're almost spending all of it, what we're bringing in. So anything we move into this budget is just purely going to burn into the reserves.
Exactly. It won't be sustainable. We had actually, I mean, we've been, every year so far, and this has been because of staffing issues, we have not utilized more than the surcharge we've been given by the state every year. This year is the first year where we're in the red with the surcharge, and that's because the stipend came, the, the, it was 105,000 that came out of that, so, or we would have been, so.
So there was conversations of moving FICA and PERF in, but, I mean...
No, I would not recommend moving FICA and PERF, because it's tied to the positions and the raises, so as the raises go up and hourly and overtime, the FICA and PERF would increase. So I would not recommend moving FICA and PERF in there. They do have other items in the foundation budget fund that is more like what might be called discretionary items. And so if there would be anything to be moved in there, I would suggest something from the foundation budget fund and then shift the foundation budget fund costs, I mean, shift the general fund costs into the foundation budget fund, so we do still achieve the objective of trying to reduce the general fund.
Well, since we're on that topic, I kind of looked, Tony helped me, and I thank you again, Tony, um, kind of for what to expect here tonight. And I feel as though there's, with the surcharge, you're probably familiar with it, but there's, there's eligible expenses, and so, um, some of our line items in the 4922 don't qualify. But one line item that does entirely is the training and education, and that's $50,000.
And Debbie?
Yes.
I don't know what your plans are, but training and ed was not utilized extensively last year. Again, I don't know what your plans are, but...
A lot of, yeah, a lot of that was COVID-related. We weren't able to go, go to classes or conferences.
And to be honest, I'll take some responsibility for that too, because I was the training coordinator until I was promoted, and so some of the, I, I was, some of the opportunities for training that I was exploring kind of went by the wayside while I was learning this new position. I do have a very proactive training coordinator in the position now, and she and I talked today, and she's already got, we, I shared with her our budget in that area, and she shared with me some ideas that she'd like to really utilize that line item. I think they're great ideas, too. I think it's going to help, I think training is also going to be another way that we will be able to retain people, if we can get them certifications, that's going to help retain them.
So what else could fit in there? So if we move training and education into there, what else out of the foundation budget could we move over there that would be? If the balance is, what was it again, 1.4, 1.4 million? And if you're breaking even basically right now, we've got 10 years of blowing 140,000 out of it, right?
I mean, I, I'll tell you what, I'm willing to do whatever we think is, obviously, it's not sustainable as we know, but we can tap into it. I just, I'd like, you know, some assurance that my department's going to see the, the wage increase, I'd, I'd like to see them right at, you know, the mid-level now instead of halfway. And if we can do that, I'd, I'd move whatever you want me to move in there until we deplete it, to be honest. That's probably not fiscally sound, but if that's the route we're taking, it's going to be depleted. I've got another equipment line that I've only used, it doesn't even show now, but I've used 10 grand, that's for the chairs. And that line item actually is, was budgeted for fire station alerting, um, but because of the delay of premier one, we've had to put off fire station alerting. But it's something that I'd like to really get underway next year. I think fire station alerting, if you're not familiar with it, is basically automated fire station notifications, and it increases, it's been proven unequivocally to increase response times. And the fire departments are on board with that. So that is one line item that I'm sure that Vicky probably noticed was underutilized this year, and that's the reason it was.
Is there other supplies?
No, that's under other, that is...
Other equipment.
Other equipment.
It's the 78,500.
What's the number on it?
No, that was in, that was...
It's the 45,40 account, other equipment.
Where's your chair? You're leasing your chairs now, right?
Well, yes, we're still waiting for them to be delivered.
Will be delivered this month.
Okay. Where, where does that go in? Is that an increase in here, too?
No, that was already, it's just not showing on the current budget, because we haven't been charged that 10 grand yet until we get the chairs delivered. So if you're looking at the 78,5 right now, it's actually 68,5. However, next year, the only thing that I would, I really have planned on using for other equipment is the fire station alerting. And I have a quote for, from a couple of different places where it looks like to get the center equipped with it, it's, should be around 75,000.
Is that one of the eligible uses in 1222, though?
Yes, yes, it is. It is, yep.
So we can move training and education and other, at 50,000, and other equipment at 78,500 into that fund? That's just moving... 128,500 over. We can do that for 10 years, I won't be here.
We probably won't either.
I'm going to be here, dang it.
You're the ones that did this, you're out of here.
And then we'd have to move stuff from the general fund into the foundation budget to free up money, it's just...
I would recommend if we did do that moving, it would be FICA and PERF from general into, we would figure out a certain amount that would like cover either administrative or just telecommunications or something like that, we would figure that out.
It's, I don't want to say guys, but I don't know how else we're going to begin to move things around to free up to, to give the raises out, that we want to give out. I mean, I don't...
That's exactly right.
We've got to start getting creative here a little bit. Well? You guys want to add that? You want to move that over in there? From foundation budget, we're moving some foundation budget items into her, um, surcharge budget, which is going to create a burn rate of about 128,000, whatever, 500.
Well, I think that it would, we can start doing that, and if we see it's burning too fast, we can, next year, we'll have a, you know, and the year after, we have a budget, we can move it back.
Have this talk again, yeah? And I mean, realistically, I looked back, the surcharge is due for an increase. I, I mean, I don't want to be speculative.
If you look at the numbers, it is, it's just not being planned at this time.
Yeah. I know we can't base anything on speculation, but at the same time, I look back at it from 2019, and it's been static, so they're going to, I can't imagine them not moving on something.
Don't count on it.
All right, can we move those over? Add those, those two amounts to the surcharge, so it's going to increase that budget. Get over to the commissioner's budget, we're going to have to make those equal adjustments. So what's the, what's the total amount? Total amount is 2,385,000. $379.
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion?
I'll second it.
Second, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We'll have to come back to that 911 budget, then when we get to the commissioner's budgets, keep doing some shifting, so you hang, hang out for a little while?
Yeah. It's a pleasure, Jeremy.
Thank you, thank you. EMA. It's not going to get any easier. How's it going, Lance?
Good.
All right, there's an increase here, 43,520, is that right?
Yes.
Looks excellent for DM, for volunteers. Recoding the floor.
I'm wondering, um...
Siren maintenance additional cost.
Talking with you the other day, you said that the sign out in front was kind of deteriorating.
It's, yeah, it's rotted.
And you're talking about having a floor, it sounds like something the commissioners or we might want to think about it as a capital project of, you know, instead of... You know what I'm talking about, there's more than one thing that's, uh, wrong out there.
Yeah, we, I mean, the sign, we...
Deteriorating.
Right, we have a, a quote for a new sign, um, what our plans were, we were going to try to do a fundraiser over the winter and hopefully raise some money to possibly pay for that. The floor, as I explained to the, our liaisons, there's two problems with it, the major problem is the floor starting to come apart and spall. And from the three people that we had look at that, they indicated that it may have been a bad mix years and years ago when it was poured, but it's actually starting to spall up. There's the second problem, which is the lesser of the two, is an adhesion problem where the epoxy is coming off. The fear with the, the concrete deteriorating and spalling, it's going to continue to get worse, and that's an inductive heated floor. So if that does get to a point where it has to be replaced and chipped out, not only do you have to repair the concrete, which would be a lot of money, um, now you have to put a new heated floor in. And so what they propose, and all three propose the same thing, that the floor be diamond-grinded down, a vapor barrier be applied to that, a new coating, and then a sealer to take care of that. And it's, we watched it start to deteriorate more and more to a point now where it's starting to become a problem, where it's actually popping up, and that's what we're concerned about, and not letting it go too long, where it costs the county a lot more money.
Yeah, Sylvia, you make a good point, I mean, one time, we've talked about this over the years, when there's one-time purchases, projects, to put it in the, the general fund as a reoccurring expense, basically. If there's another place, or have you talked to the commissioners about this?
It, it's been brought up, the previous facilities director, we do have a new facilities director now, um, it, that, and I know like our parking lot, we've been trying to get that paid for four years now. We did have some patchwork done a year or so ago to try to get it by, but it's basically sinking in the back and it needs to be redone.
See, that's what I mean, the whole, that whole area out there needs to be looked at seriously.
So have you talked to the new facilities?
I had an initial meeting with him, um, we discussed a lot of things, um, that exact topic did not come up, it was just an initial meeting, but we can talk more in-depth with him. I don't know what their budget is relative to that, but I know previous directors, you know, this stuff's been brought up to and it's not been corrected, so that's why finally it got to a point now where I'm worried about it costing more money, you know? I mean, I would imagine it'd be to the tune of $100,000 if... I mean, I would imagine it'd be to the tune of $100,000 if you had to pour all new concrete and run new lines in the ground to heat that floor, and I did not want it to get to that point. And this quote that we have here is the lowest of the three.
Well, I don't know, something, we've got the commissioners up, I mean, these are, our facilities need to be taken care of. One-time costs put in the, you know, general fund is representing a reoccurring cost, but what do you normally, what do you normally spend out of that? I mean, out of that line item? Is there a, has that been the right number?
So the-
1,000?
Well, we increased it 26,000 for the floor.
Right, I'm saying, what do you normally, you spend out of that, that 7,000, is that a good number, normally on an annual basis?
That's a pretty good number, yeah.
And also, just to talk a little bit about the siren maintenance and repair, you're wanting, why are you wanting those additional, tell me again?
Well, the sirens are to a point in age where we're starting to have more major things will fail on them, just because of the age. In the past, we've had some of our volunteers, we've been very lucky, it's a very technical, they're very technical repairs anyway. We were lucky enough to have a couple people who had some of the expertise to be able to do that, and it's getting, they've even said beyond what they're capable of doing without being a licensed and bonded electrician and becoming a liability to the county. So a lot of these repairs are that. Secondly, having enough time now to keep up on them, to keep them all running. What we don't wanna do is get to a point where we have several in failure, as they were years and years ago. And so what we did was, we already have Midwestern Electric that does a lot of the major repairs when we need them. We reached out to them and said, "Look, what would we be paying if we were doing a P and M on these where they get looked at every year?" To prevent them from failing to begin with, because if you have, say, there's four basically car batteries in these, if one explodes and it ruins the computer boards and all the equipment inside that box, we're talking a lot of money to replace that. And so just making sure, that's just an example, but making sure that we're catching things before they fail. And what we would like to do is have them look at every single siren once a year, if possible, to hopefully prevent a lot of these things from happening. We just don't have the time to do that on a volunteer basis. And the deputy director and myself do get up, up there, you know, some of these are up in the air, we're on a ladder, we're trying to do that and do some repairs, but again, I'm not a licensed electrician. We'll change batteries and do some things that we can do, but we're not really, you know, technically the people who should be doing that. So we really need to make sure that we're having qualified professionals doing that. And so not only are they licensed and bonded electricians, but they're also electronics experts because they work on traffic signals and different things like that, where they can look at these. Now, we do look at the sirens on the computer system every day, and we assess if there's one that's red, which would indicate it's not working, what might be wrong. We can look at data from the computer, try to determine if it's a battery or something minor, where we can go up and fix it ourselves, and we do do that. We try to fix it ourselves before we call somebody out. But we've gotten to a point, an example was, we had to actually have one of the sirens disconnected from NIPSCO, a crane brought out, took, the boxes are all connected, we had to have those lowered with a crane, take all the components out, put new boxes out, because they were rusted completely through.
Didn't they do this, I mean, for years ago? That's what they did, though, out at EMA, was take care of the sirens and that, is that right?
Before me, years ago, they had a contractor that was supposed to be doing that, and in my, from what I've heard, and I was not here, those were allowed to be coming to disrepair. So I don't wanna, I don't know if they weren't doing the maintenance on them, then it evolved to our volunteers, this was part of me getting here, working on the sirens. And so we've done as much as we can with what we have, but again, these people have regular jobs. So we have a siren go down, and there's, you know, what we don't wanna do is have them waiting to be repaired-
Oh, absolutely.
-on somebody who's, you know, needs to get off work and try to come, rather than it getting fixed and them not going off in a storm and having something bad happen.
Okay, so Lance, tell me this, how many sirens do we have?
52.
Okay, so if you have 52 sirens, and you know the condition of-
Yes, sir.
-of the sirens, to repair, replace, or whatever, you're saying that for 2023, you need $40,000 to make sure that we maintain them, you know?
Yes, that's, yeah. I mean, if we had a major breakdown and it ended up being more, we would come back to you and ask for that. But just to actually lay hands on them, fix anything minor, that was the estimate we got, you know, we said, "Give us," it's all time and material, but we also then order the parts ourselves to save the county from getting an upcharge on the parts.
I remember in a time where I thought we had talked about sirens, where, and it was incredible to think that we had sirens throughout the county that weren't, that were in disrepair, that weren't working, in fact. I don't know how many, I don't remember how many years ago it was, and maybe Sylvia, that's what you're reflecting back on, but at that time, I thought we put a system in place to say that we're well beyond that. I mean, I would like to think that we can take care of our 52 sirens appropriately without having to, you know, allow them to fall into disrepair. I mean, to me, it just seems crazy, and we should be well beyond this discussion on it. I mean-
And what we did was, we did shift some of our money around to get that fund to 30,000, so we're really only asking for 10,000 additional on that. So out of that 40, it's only 10 additional.
So let me, I'm trying to read this, they gave us different funds, the auditor's office, am I reading this right, under EMA? Were you transferring, is that transferring out of this fund? So in 2018, you transferred $16,000 out of this fund?
We did, yeah.
2020, you transferred 1,000 out, in 2021, you transferred 12,000 out.
Yeah.
So you're transferring money out of this fund, but now you're saying, over the last couple of years, and kind of to Mike's point, is we're transferring money out, so we're not repairing it, and all of a sudden, now we're to the point where-
Oh, we were repairing it, but now it's gotten to a point where they're getting old enough that you're having major things break down on them. So some of the minor things before, you know, we were able to take care of them. When we were transferring money out, it was because we were short in other categories, so we were basically robbing Peter to pay Paul.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, it is. I mean, we've been very fortunate in the past to have some very technical volunteers that have cost the county no money, but we're now, we're to a point where we need some professional licensed people doing this work, and people who have time to do it, because I don't think if we get to a storm and something's not working, saying our volunteers were busy at the regular jobs is going to be acceptable, and I know that it's not for you, too.
So we're just trying to right-size things. I mean, I shouldn't really say, we're not robbing Peter, pay Paul, but we're trying to right-size things over historical movements of, you know, different budgets and funds within it.
Sure.
And just like this, we've got this other report from the auditor's office, too, that shows you've underutilized, I think it's uniforms and clothing.
You're talking about just this year? Because last, every year, we've spent-
Every year, have you spent it out?
Yeah, 98, I think 99%.
Okay, so it's just this year, yeah.
So this year, we already have, we're waiting on an invoice to come in for over $400. I have two new volunteers that I have to equip with uniforms and equipment, and then we'll be placing another order, so that'll be gone, I can guarantee that.
All right, what about promotional items?
Promotional, we just received an order, so I think probably half of what's in there is gone. If we had to give up the other half, that's something we could, you know, we can probably sacrifice if we had to.
Expended, well, that's so far this year. Yeah, it looks like you had been expending most of it, though. Not just this year, yeah. Looks like you're using most. Training and ed?
Training and ed will be used most, a lot of it next week, because I have to go to Indianapolis for some training with Homeland Security, it's a conference slash training. And then we have some other training equipment that we need to buy, but we kinda were, that conference and training every year is in October, and so we kinda make sure that we don't spend it before then, if possible. But there's been years we just haven't gone at all, because we didn't have enough money left.
It's $2,500.
Yes.
Water and sewage and maintenance agreements, both those line items.
Yeah, maintenance agreements is the copy machine and our alarm system, which the copy machine's paid quarterly, that'll be gone, and the alarms, with that and the alarm system, it'll be gone.
Well, I would suggest taking the $26,000 out, that's my, at least, first move on this budget. I mean, it's an increase of 41, take that out, that's a one-time cost, something we need to figure out how to pay for them with, talk to the commissioners, take care of the building, the floor in there-
Yeah.
And anything else.
Make a motion, Jeremy, with that stipulation, take out that capital outlay and make a motion on the rest of the budget.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the, is that the, is that the number with the 26,000, $324,167?
Yes.
Motion, second, agree on it?
Yeah.
Discussion?
Did we add, is that per diem in this one?
It is.
Yes.
Do we have other departments that can pay per diem for volunteers?
The hazmat team currently pays a $250 per diem, which is the other side of our house, to, and have for years, to the hazardous materials responders that meet the minimum requirements for the training and attendance. So all we're doing is making that equal, because our, on the other side of the house, the EMA volunteers go through just as much training and are out there on emergency scenes, and they have gotten absolutely nothing for years. So our max for volunteers is 20, it'll never be over 20. We have less than that right now, we have 14. And that would be only if they meet the minimum requirement. So they may not all meet that, so our worst-case scenario, we're talking $5,000, but we're paying the hazmat volunteers that per diem, and we're not paying the EMA volunteers who are responding to emergencies as well.
Lance, off the top of your head, how many hours a year, annually, do you think the volunteers put in?
Well, it's typically been about 1,200, about 1,200 hours a year is typically what-
So we're saving the county approximately how much money a year?
You know, and I looked at that, yeah, absolutely. Give me one second.
It would be a lot.
The government rate for our volunteer is $29.85 an hour.
Some of these people are technically, we probably couldn't afford.
They took, they took $7,500 that we got as a donation and built a $50,000 video wall for our emergency operations center, that's, if the county built that. And I, and I know, because I built one when I was chief of U.S. Steel.
So you think this $5,000 is a pretty good deal for the county?
I, I think it's something, showing them some thanks for all the money they do, or the things they do and the money they save us.
Something that I'd like to ask, so that, would that be paid out over monthly?
No, it would just be paid at the end of the year, if they've met the minimum requirements at the end of December, or close to, you know, the end of December.
I'm just thinking about people that would come on, then their two months, or, you know?
Yeah, they could prorate that, that's, you know, absolutely.
You're gonna manage it, right?
Yeah, we would manage it. We have a, we have a tracking sheet that we track all their hours and the categories, because there's cer, it's not just hours, it's, they have to have so many meetings, so many hours in training, so many hours, public hours, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
No.
Lance, do you wanna talk about, you're kinda letting everybody get into their, you've got some requests here for positions?
Yeah, I do. Two, so one, as you know, we've asked for an additional position for four years to try to get us where we need to be as far as getting, being able to get things done with EMA. There's a lot of equipment that we take care of, and what I find is, instead of me worrying about writing emergency plans for the entire county, we have 20 major pieces of equipment that we have to take care of and inspect, in addition, probably another 20 that aren't necessarily major pieces of equipment, but that have to be taken care of, managing volunteers and the like. So that takes me, as a director, and also the deputy director, away a lot of times from what we need to be working on, looking at the big picture. In the absence of being able to get an additional person, we said, "Well, let's try to shift gears here, and it's not gonna get me exactly where I need to be, but at least closer. Can we redefine the administrative assistance position, give that position additional responsibilities, making them an exempt person where they would be on salary, which gives me flexibility on their hours as well as assignments, responding to emergencies, they would have to be able to run all the equipment, when we have planned events such as the Popcorn Fest or the fair where we have to have out there and be on, as a presence out there with emergency responders, that person would be doing that, and then also looking at, having somebody who can coordinate some of these maintenance activities that we're talking about and track these things, being able to do that. I worked with HR and said, "What, what does it take in order for that person to be salary rather than hourly?" And she gave me some advice on that, we wrote up a job description. So what we'd be just doing is looking to reclassify that job, obviously, there'd be a pay increase with that, because it's a lot of additional responsibilities, so that would be adjusted. The current salary there is $44,558, it would go up to $52,507, so that's a $7,949 difference. But I wanna also point out that the Department of Homeland Security, every year we apply for a grant, and they pay half of that position's salary, so that means it would only cost the county $3,974. What that gives me is an additional emergency responder and somebody to help, to help coordinate some of the things that we need to do. So again, it's, I'm stepping away right now, at least, from the extra position, which we do need, but how do we get closer to where we need to be without costing the county as much money? So that's, that's the premise of that position.
And I think you remember, we've talked, that this is your administrative assistant right?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
And so you're going to take away, and my concern was, is that are, is she going to be able to meet all of her secretarial, you know, all of her other jobs that's required?
Yeah, we've done a lot of talking about that, and, and we've, we've had to shift a lot of things, and what we've talked about is, we're gonna have to maybe look at a lot of systems to make maybe some of these things more efficient, how do we work smarter and then be able to do more work? I mean, it's, it's going to be, it's gonna be harder, I'm not gonna pad it, but again, I'm, I'm trying to make, you know, look at this from a different approach, knowing that the county's trying to not cost a lot more money, and again, getting me closer to where we need to be, but not there, so.
So Lance, and then the $52,507, had you explained how you came up with that, or is that through the use of HR?
Yeah, I talked to Rhonda from HR and asked her, if somebody was doing these types of jobs, what kind of salary range would we be talking about? And she guided me in that realm, and then we also looked from a legal standpoint, in order to build a shift that to salary, what are some of the major things that have to happen, supervising personnel and some different things, which this position then would be also supervising emergency responders, so our volunteer responders on scenes, which, which can happen at times, or on, again, it could be planned events or some other things, also lining up some of this maintenance activity, if it's something that one of our volunteers can do, if it's a minor repair, and they can do that, line people up to do that. There's a lot of coordination that takes place, kinda behind the scenes, that people don't realize, with the inspection of our equipment. We, I figured it out today, and we've done, just because of deployments and different things, I think it was 300 inspections on major pieces of equipment just in the last year. It takes a lot of time, if you do it right, you're updating sometime computer systems, running engines, checking them, doing a lot of different things, both electronically and mechanically, in order to do that. So somebody has to coordinate that, and sometimes we're physically doing it ourselves, too, but trying to get, again, closer to where we need to be, because this equipment has to work when people call us, when they, when they call us, they're really in a bad way, and so we have to make sure it works every single time, and so there's a lot that goes into that behind the scenes, and if you remember, five years ago, that was not the case, when we put a survey out to all the chiefs, both in police and fire, that was one of the things, they said, "You show up and your equipment does not work."
Yeah, I think the, expanding the job description to eliminate or minimize the need to add an additional person makes a lot of sense, and that's a, I think that's a positive, positive step, and I, so the only question I have is, with, with the- And that's a, I think that's a positive, positive step. And I, so the only question I have is with, with the pay adjustment, which, you know, based on those additional responsibilities and becoming an exempt employee, right?
Yes.
And I don't know if, if Rhonda looked at the pay study to say that with those responsibilities, she'd be in one of these categories that are listed on the jo- salary ordinance. And if she figured out halfway to midpoint, which is kind of the guide that we're working toward, do you know, she looked at that detail?
I believe she did, but I would ask her just to double check that.
And so that'll be a point to clarify as part of the wages when we talk about that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I think it's a, it's a great way to get closer to where you want to be.
I appreciate it. And the last one on there, just to speak to that, was the adjustment for the deputy director's position. Now this, we wrote this up prior to the study being released, but what I would point out, and this is the same as it's been for the last couple of years when I asked about this, Mark's the deputy director. In the line of progression, there's the director, deputy director, hazardous materials team commander going down the line, and then the administrative assistant currently. Mark outranks Greg. He's technically responsible for him. If I'm not here, he is the director, but he makes less than him. And so even with the salary study, you know, this was in there, this, so this doesn't take into consideration any additional raises, but it's to make it correct so that the progression or the line of progression is in line with where it should be because again, that's about a $7,000 difference. And I know we talked about it last year and the job study came up, but now we're, here we are a year later and, you know, I, I do know that you are trying to adjust things, but the point would be that he needs to be up above Greg and he's not.
And I think that's unlikely to be rectified in the pay study.
Yeah, that, that'll be addressed.
Yeah. So and, and when I wrote this up, that had not been released yet.
I think you'd rather take, this is what we're looking at, the wage study than whatever.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
At least the points made that, that needs to be turned.
All right. Well, we'll, uh, it's, it's in front of you. We'll, we'll dive into it in a week. We try to button it up with those requests for additional, a little restructuring.
Is that classification later then or a, a different meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll tackle that Tuesday.
Okay.
So what do we got? The other budget, emergency planning?
So the other budgets are the LEPC, the hazmat budget and the district one budget, none of which are, are money. So that's money that either comes from the state or all the counties pitch into that district fund. So here, I can read them to you.
21 though?
So 1152, which is the LEPC.
Yeah, okay.
That's exactly the same as last year.
$10,000. It's in front of you. That's 1152. It seems, I don't, it's over a little bit, but LEPC, 1152, $18,000.
Motion.
Motion, second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. I, maybe I just missed something.
It's okay. You have hazardous substance fund, which is.
Oh, they're on the same page. Sorry. Hazardous substance, looks like a $750 increase.
So he shifted some money around. There is a $750 increase, but again, that, none of that money comes from our county. That comes from the deep water injections and that comes from the government. And that's just due to increased cost on the equipment.
Motion.
Motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. District one task force fund, EMA, $31,140, the same.
And again, that's money that each county kicks into that doesn't.
Motion.
Second, motion, second, second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. All right.
Should be you.
See you Tuesday.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks Lance.
Bring a pillow. Parks.
Hello.
Hello, how's it going?
All right.
So and then I did, I suppose before we jump into, to, in response to the email that came out Friday, I did make some adjustments to our requests.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, we had a pre-sentence.
Would you do a cut about 500,000?
Cut a little bit. Not quite that much.
490s fine.
They're voluntarily giving up some. Yes, we've got another one added to the bank account. It's getting worried. I'm almost laughing.
We're in trouble.
We have big trouble. 22 appropriations and then a couple I reduced back as well, like optimizations like.
Mr. Terrence.
So, so can we go ahead and put these in?
Yeah.
So council, the park superintendent just authorized us to go in and make the changes right now.
Go ahead, yeah.
Do it, yeah.
All I'm gonna take.
There's a lot that he's proposing.
All right.
It won't be long.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we backed a bunch of them out in, in light of the, the goals of the study.
Thank you.
And in the, the email we got Friday. So the only, the only request line items that we left in place, a large portion of it is from the salaries increase that took place in July when I started and when we created the assistant superintendent's position.
So 1709 is what we've already approved?
Yep. And then the remaining, it's roughly 27,000 remaining for an increase is all related to facilities maintenance, building the structures and vehicles and equipment maintenance and then utilities as well.
So what's your largest increase besides the salaries and why they're working on it?
Uh, the largest increase is to our building and structures, R and M.
You're sticking with the 24,000?
Uh, that one actually should have an increase. Yeah, the $24,000 increase. And that's largely because we have over 47 structures and, and facilities or buildings that we maintain throughout the parks and several of our buildings are over 80 years old. So they do cost a lot of money to upkeep and maintenance isn't going to get any cheaper on those buildings.
What kind of vehicle are you looking at here for 45,000?
That's one of the line items I cut.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh.
That one and the new equipment. But I do want to speak to that because at some point we do need those items. Our newest work truck is a 2007 rusted Dodge.
2007?
That's your newest?
That's our newest work truck. Also, some of our mowers that we're using to mow throughout the county are 15 years old. Some don't work. And we currently mow almost 150 acres.
Say that again.
Jerry, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say we do this tonight, but you know, cutting, at some point, we're gonna have to really look at parks. I think our parks, uh, really glad you're here, you know, our new superintendent, but, uh, you know, I think to support our park, uh, county parks, I think have, I'm just gonna state for the record, uh, personally, I think they've been neglected over several years and there's gonna come a point where we need to invest. I think that's one of the pillars of quality of life people look for. You know, you put in that category, public safety, roads, and parks, I think is one of them that really makes Port County attractive. Your newest vehicles are 2007.
Yeah, our primary work truck that doubles as our plow truck, that holds our mowers and does our plowing is a 2007 Dodge Ram.
That's almost shameful that the parks have gotten to this point where, um, I think we're, we're gonna have, we got work to do. You know, pay our people money, but I'm just gonna state for, I can kind of say that, uh, working with our new superintendent, I think it's, we are gonna have to invest in our park system and the county.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any question in that and, and welcome to the county.
Glad to be here.
Greg, glad to have you. And, and we're, we're confident that you're gonna be the person that's gonna, gonna help get the parks to where it ought to be because that echo Councilman Brickner's comments, we're way behind. And, and I think in terms of potential, I think there's phenomenal potential.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I mean, we can do, we can do wonderful things.
Up till now, it's, in many respects, it's been on tap. So I, I'm anxious for you to get your hands around it. And, and I think as a council, we're, we're committed to supporting you in that effort. And I'd also say that this would include the commissioner's office and to help support that effort because it's gonna take collaborative effort between both the commissioner's office and the council to do what's necessary to make parks closer to where it ought to be. And, and it, and it could and should be spectacular. And so when we talk about, and you know, I don't want to get on a soapbox necessarily, but when we talk about equipment and we talk about vehicles, you know, the, your newest vehicle is a 2007.
Yeah, or, yeah, our primary work trucks, we have one-ton 2007 Dodge and then a half-ton 2007 Dodge.
And so, and I think part of a comprehensive review of all vehicles throughout the county should be, should be looked at. What departments have what vehicles and who uses them? How old are they? What's the maintenance? What, who's driving them? What are the policies related to, to who's driving the vehicles and are they take-home vehicles? And if they are, what are the policies related to the take-home, the take-home vehicles? And I know we are, as a county, we're buying new vehicles, brand-new vehicles, first-time vehicles for new departments. And all the while, we've got departments who haven't bought a new vehicle since 2007. And that is shameful.
I mean, I've actually got a, if you guys are interested in it, a document here that shows all of our equipment, the age and then as well one for our structures as well.
Can you email it to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, and, and my point in all this is to say that we have to take a comprehensive look at the entire county, and that's the council commissioners included, to say, let's look at our vehicles. Let's look at, at smacks of the repair and maintenance where we've got buildings and facilities that have specific capital needs that we're not, that we're not addressing. And, and we, we have to do better than that. And so I'd, I'd charge this council and I'd also challenge the commissioner's office to take a concerted effort to look at those things to make sure that our people are given the right tools to do what, what we're asking them to do.
Mike, I couldn't agree more. And I think this is to Councilman Brickner. He's been pounding it for, I don't know, a couple of months now. ARPA is a one-time infusion of money and I, I think we really need to consider that over the next couple of weeks, the next week, you know, or whenever we decide to, you know, bring the rest of that ARPA up, it's, how do we hand out eight, nine million dollars to outside organizations when our own parks doesn't have the vehicles that take care of our own property right now? What did you say about the, your mowing apparatus? What was?
We have, just for, for example, one of our John Deere tractors is from 1990. We've got a skid steer from 2006. We've got a zero-turn mower from 2001. Actually, our newest zero-turn mower looks to be about from 2007. And then we mow almost 150 acres a week in the summer. One of those actually went down and we had to mow with two zero turns and a broken bat wing at one point.
So get that to us and, and, um, uh, our auditor has informed us recently that I think we're getting another $100,000.
Yes, out of ARPA.
Out of ARPA?
Yes.
So I think we really have to, this would be a great time to again, look at county. If, if there's one-time purchases we could use, you know, this money for.
Yeah, that'd be great. Because that's one of our, our biggest struggles on our operational level is, is our equipment is old. And it's more costly to repair. They break down more often. And it's just, a lot of them have become more of a hindrance than they are a benefit.
Do you have, you wouldn't happen to have in that list like a priorities and what the cost of replacement is?
Uh, cost of replacement, not a true cost of replacement as I have the cost of the original paid, but I can do, I can do a cost of replacement on these as well. And then I do have them based on priority, which ones are still in good shape, which ones are.
Would it be appropriate to, to ask our superintendent to come before us with, just come before us with some needs? You know, maybe not during this process, but at some point, address the council. I mean, what does park depend, what do you need to get your department going? At least where it's manageable and then kind of go from there, you know, as far as one-time purchases, whether it's mowers, vehicles or anything like that.
I think it'd be appropriate to have a couple of the council members and, and a commissioner work together with the parks department to say, what can we do to get things started to get them to where they, closer to where they need to be?
Yeah.
Sooner than later because we, if we're thinking of ARPA money, that has to be, well.
Who does your maintenance, do you guys do it yourself?
We do it in-house, yeah.
Okay. Even your vehicles?
Vehicles unless, unless it's something major, then you do, then we do send it somewhere else. But we do a lot of our, like the minor stuff we'll do in-house.
Does the sheriff's garage deal with your repairs of the major stuff for your vehicles?
No, that door is open, but historically it doesn't sound like that's one we've used.
Do you have a mechanic or two in the parks department that does that?
No, actually staffing is another one of our, our primary concerns. We have a full-time horticulturist slash operations manager out at Sunset and then the entire maintenance staff under him is five part-time maintenance and groundskeepers. And that's the entirety of our maintenance staff.
So wouldn't, would it not make sense to utilize the sheriff's garage to take care of some of these vehicle maintenance needs?
It does at times. Sometimes there's specialty repairs. A lot of what breaks down on-site is like a bat wing mower, which is a pull-behind bush hog. Or one of our skid steers goes down or the tractor goes down. And a lot of times that'll require a more specialty type of repair. Usually we usually take to an outside vendor.
So what do we got right now? So we've got.
Half a million?
51,000 increases. Is that right, 50,000?
Yes.
So what are those, what are the 50,000 in increases? Can we go back up to what he adjusted? We know the 24,000 for the buildings.
It's the wages that we approved last year.
And the wages we approved last year get us.
Approved this year.
Oh, sorry.
Sure, sure.
Those were built into the budget.
So what are all these little difference, $15 difference?
Where's that one from?
Tires and tubes.
$750. Contractual cleaning services. So are we, are we hiring molly-made too?
Are you looking down at, um, you know, which line item are you looking at?
Increased cost materials needed for maintenance, increasing contractual cleaning services.
Oh, you're looking at.
Maintenance supplies.
Maintenance agreements. Is that the one? Building, building maintenance.
Building maintenance.
Okay, yeah, so that one, we do use Cintas a lot of times at, during the summer to offset some of our housekeeping responsibilities for our maintenance guys. For at Sunset Hill primarily.
Like your bathrooms and stuff?
Yeah. Yes, they'll come out and they'll supply like hand soaps, toilet papers, paper towels, things like that for us.
I'll make the motion as, as adjusted.
Second.
The motion is second on the floor for the $621,298. So we're just slowly taking away all the money we took from. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So, um, all right. He's not here.
Since you brought up the new fund that has become available through ARPA, I just want to make it clear, or make it known that it's not like the SLFREF program. The commissioners don't have to approve the plan. Per the state board of accounts.
Perfect.
Pardon me?
Perfect.
Yes, per state board of accounts, that decision is entirely up to you.
Parks operating. Increase of $445 for a total of $227,029.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a couple of seconds, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Wildlife management donation, $24,275.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. I don't know if this is the time, but again, you know, as you guys know, I sent an email out asking the commissioners to be here because I thought there's no better time to, to ask about how we're gonna move forward on, on major things in this county, major issues. And obviously, you know, I'm hearing from this board that parks is. And obviously, you know, I'm hearing from this board that parks is a priority. So Greg, backing your research a little bit, and I don't know how far down the path you got, a park impact fee, I mean, what would?
That was just for South County.
That was just for South County?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Division Road South.
All right, I'm just...
I'm just saying, that's what it was.
It's, you want to explain what a park impact fee is?
It's when there's new construction, the builders, it's a builder's fee, and then it goes specifically into the Parks Fund. So that'll, it'll help, like, South County, the park system is almost non-existent. We know that. And a lot of it is because there's no money available. So the impact, I introduced the notion of an impact fee years ago to see if that would help. And of course, the previous superintendent was very enthused about it. And then we had it moving forward, because the plant commission is the one that ultimately does that. And I was on the plant commission when I initiated, and then Bob Poprad got on, and he was moving it forward, and then all of a sudden, you know, he had his, well, you know, he died, and it kind of fell, and then the superintendent left, so it just kind of dropped. So that was something that, I mean, we can easily move it back, and the money would just go to the South County. I gotta be specific about that. The other areas have them already, so that's why it would just, so, if that makes sense.
My impression would be that, wouldn't it be a county impact fee outside of municipalities? So I don't know why it would be just South County.
That's how it was explained, that's how Bob explained it to me.
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it makes sense. It's a county, and anything unincorporated area in which we have jurisdiction.
Contributed to it.
Yeah, contributed to it.
No, clarify that.
Basically, my understanding is, it's basically, it's, well, I don't know, I mean, it's a cost to the developer.
Already.
Or how is it attached on the permit?
Mr. Thompson, can you add a little clarification?
No, you didn't.
You look very comfortable back there.
Where is that caught, what is that attached to? A permit, a building permit? Where's the, who pays that impact fee?
First, you're gonna have to do a study to determine the level of service, the level of service of county life and county for the park system. Is the park at the level of the identified demerit demographic in the county for supplying park land? Okay? This money you collect from the park can cannot be used for trucks or equipment, as being discussed, but it can be used to, for purchase of additional micro, South County. I don't think you can get out, South County, if you have to do it for the entire county and look at the level of service. In that situation, you could come out and say, you know, you need this many acres of park land to get to the level of service required by the site. Now, the problem with that is, is you have to bring up the money to get it up to that level of service. And when you're above, you think above that level of service, then you can start using the impact fee to pay for a lot of the level of service. We also looked at the idea of doing that for a broken act a few years ago. It's always said you help the level of service. And if you're at that level of service, great, fine, then you can start using the impact fee.
So that would be what, this study would show where we're at in level of service?
It's also developed from the presidential conference. I do not believe that the impact fee can be imposed on this one for commercial, you know, presidential.
So the contractor would have to pay that fee when he, on a permit?
Mm-hmm.
There's plenty of development happening throughout unincorporated Porter County, where I think the funds would be meaningful, and it takes some work. And I don't know, Greg, since you started down that path, if you could champion it to...
Yeah, it's fine.
What we need to do to resurrect it and how we consider it. Because if it's an opportunity or an option, then it certainly would be beneficial to the parks to do that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm betting on that.
All right, thank you, Bob. Just an idea, I don't, I just remember it being discussed.
It was, because we saw a problem years ago with that, yeah.
Yeah, it could be very beneficial.
And it goes to the developer, the homeowner, you know, possibly he passes it on to the, you know, the buyer. But, all right, I think that's all. Anybody got anything else for Parks? Was that it? We good?
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, and good luck. And if you could get us...
Yeah, I'll send all this stuff to you.
And I would say the quicker you get replacement costs to us as we move down this path.
Okay, yeah, me, too.
All right, thank you.
Take care, Jake.
Thanks, have a great night.
Jake from Steak Park.
Tourism.
Been waiting for that all day.
Yeah, it probably was. I don't have any doubt about it.
I snuck it in there.
Yeah. And just so you guys know, it was, yeah, there's some reading material from Parks and behind it, three pages of stuff, so.
Hello.
Hello, hello, hello. How are we?
Good.
Wonderful.
All right. What do we got? An increase of $17,165 to your budget here? And I believe I read some stuff, but...
We also sent some stuff on wages, but we recognize those are not going to be addressed tonight.
Yep.
But we wanted to get out in front of that, because it's as important for us.
Why don't you blast us? Why don't you give us real quick what you got behind here, what you're asking for?
Oh, so we have a...
For the wages, or?
Yeah, yeah, we might as well.
Well, we need...
Dive in.
We need an assistant operations director. Our current operations director is overwhelmed. She's doing like three different jobs. So that was one, and that one is a part-time position. And then additionally, on the other wage items, it's bringing them up in line. We submitted that before the wage study came out, but bringing them in line, because what occurred, we had an employee who was offered a job in the private sector at the same salary that our director makes. And that's frightening for us, because we spend, like some other departments have said, we spend a lot of money training, and we've cut, you know, to where we're doing almost everything in-house. And to potentially lose our trained staff is frightening for us, quite frankly. So we, all of the increases are within the parameters of the wage study, I believe, although, quite frankly, I didn't go in and compare what we used and what you used. But we used a similar formula or format that we acquired privately. One of the problems with your wage study is, which position was it that was inaccurately?
As our operations director.
Yeah, they have her inaccurately placed as far as salary level.
We're gonna have to get something straight now. There was nothing wrong with the study. So we know that moving forward.
Well, perfect. So when we get there, we may have a little different number than you on that particular spot, and we also feel that we need a part-time assistant. We intend to come for that part-time assistant probably before the end of the year. We're, as a national park now, today we set the record at 173,000 people.
Does your revenue sustain that?
Yes.
We would not suggest it otherwise.
It's fine.
All right, so you haven't looked, and I don't, I'm not sure the wage study can take a peek, committee, but you're not sure of what you're suggesting in terms of increases lines up with the wage study?
Oralize, sure.
Yeah, so I had a...
Wait, here, you want this?
I have it. So we weren't prepared to talk about it tonight. We can, I mean, we thought we were going to be coming back, but I, I mean, I did create a chart from what we had submitted versus from the wage study. So it's not really that far off. We're trying to get to the midpoint, so we're not extremely far off. The biggest one would just be, is the operations director. And it's not, and that's not far off. It's just that we have a little bit of a discrepancy there.
And I think our plan, the initial plan from the committee was halfway to midpoint this year, to come, I think with the intentions of completing all the way to midpoint to our next budget session, so.
And so, and some of our suggestions, too, is years of service. So we're all over the place in terms of years of service, and that should be factored in as well, as far as like midpoint and so forth.
Which is, I've got, been brought to my attention a couple of times today, you know, where we're, I think the wage study was trying to equal out responsibility, you know, jobs, not people.
Mm-hmm.
I understand, well, what if somebody got hired six months ago versus somebody that's been here 10 years? I think that's the point of our longevity pay, is to cover that, you know, award that longevity here. Now, is that something the wage committee, or we've got to look at making it, I don't know, better?
Better.
Yeah, more meaningful? You know, probably it is gonna have to become maybe phase two as we move into next year, but, all right, is there anything else? So biggest thing is?
There was one other thing. How long has Julie been there?
Julie's been there probably at least 10 years.
We've got one employee who's been there 10 years. What's her hourly?
$16.
$16. And then we have new people that are there that are dealing with...
No, no, our destination concierge. Sandy, how much of our destination ambassadors? Our destination ambassadors, who are dealing with 173,000 visitors, are getting $12 an hour.
So...
And the wage study said it should be at least a minimum of $21.
Current 144 says you can pay up to 15, right?
Yeah.
And is there a reason, is it just not in the budget to pay 15, or?
Yeah, so we just, we're gonna slowly get that up there. But then we saw the wages study, and then they're like $21, so that's something that we need to take a closer look at.
I've gotten, I think we've said this, correct me if I'm wrong here, I mean, as we're trying to right-size, you know, salaries, the per hour needs to follow up, too, as long as you've got the money to sustain it.
Right, and we do. We're not going to suggest anything we can't sustain.
Is there a reason why you haven't gone to 15 just yet, then?
Well, we had been at $10, and we got them up to 12 this year. So we're just, you know, again, we're just trying to get all of our salaries up at the same time. So we've got salaries that have got to get up, so we're trying to do everything at one point, just get everybody where we think they should be.
And we'll probably come in in November with a part-time position.
You want to add another part-time position? Something?
We need one part-time.
That's nice talk on here.
To assist our operations director, because she's got four different hats.
All right, I'm not sure what you guys want to do. There's the budget in front of us with just some slight increases.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the $2,97,228. Motion is second. If you guys want to do anything with the 144 with the hourly right now, or just wait? Just gotta make sure.
Yeah, just wait.
Just wait, okay.
We'd rather bring it all.
If you want now.
We'd rather bring it all at once.
Bring it all Tuesday.
At the next...
Next Tuesday?
Eighteenth, yeah.
Bring all of our wage stuff.
We'll compare it. We're gonna raise things up on Tuesday, so further discussion.
Bring your hats, too.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
When am I gonna do my signature?
Get you a tricorn hat.
Oh, same sign.
Thank you.
One of the easier ones in a while, hasn't it, Mitch?
Yeah. Real boss.
Yeah, wait till Tuesday.
Bring your lunch.
Recycling and waste. Sylvia.
Sylvia's getting thirsty up here.
Sylvia's starting shit.
Oh, you never said that.
All right, all right. Get control of yourself, Mrs. Graham. Recycling and waste district, we got a large increase of $165,753. Contractual services.
Yeah, absolutely. Our contracts, what we talked about in our board meeting, our contracts were all signed in 2019 for our large services, household hazardous waste, and large, large electronics. So we are estimated and been projecting a 20 percent, they've been informing to tell us, a 20 percent increase, so.
That's a landfill, or wherever those things?
Household hazardous waste, yeah, absolutely. It's specialized material, yeah, yes.
All right. Medical life, big jump?
Yeah, the, also, big jump, as you've heard other department heads and people speak about, we've had a change, a rollover of staff. So in the past, we used to only appropriate for those who had retaken the county insurance. We subscribed to the insurance plan. Last year, I had three turnovers over the same position, so some needed the insurance, some didn't. We didn't have it appropriated, so we just want to have it appropriated as a line item for the unfortunate looking at the turnover in each position based on pay. So we're just making sure it is offered as a benefit to all six of our full-time employees, and we're just making sure it's appropriated for all six employees.
Whether they take it or not.
Correct, yes, just so that we have it there.
I want it. I don't take insurance.
So the 122, that's requested, that's assuming all six?
That's with all six, and then along the same lines of the short-term disability that is paid for, for all full-time staff members.
All right, anything else to stand out? And this is all sustainable?
This is all sustainable, and our board did approve this budget before it was being submitted, so.
This, it's good. I didn't, I mean, you got a reserve?
Yes, we do.
How much?
Uh, um, probably, we put some money in a rainy day fund, this doesn't touch that, but I'm thinking it's probably near half a million.
You got about a half a million dollars?
Plus the rainy day, I think.
Yeah.
So it's sustainable.
All right, further discussion? Merit pay, what's the, I'm sorry, what's the merit pay?
I don't, I shouldn't have anything in merit pay.
$500.
Do I take that out?
Merit pay. We use a different system, so I don't know what the number is. I'm sorry, can you tell me what the number is?
Back in the box?
No, but is there a specific line item?
Line item? Other personal services.
Oh, um...
My 911, 40.
126. One, two, three, four. Um... I see it in there. Hold on one second. I don't know if we, one second.
Is that Suda? Oh, no.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'll have to look it up. I didn't bring my entire deep enough folder to tell you. I apologize for that.
Well, I'd just be interested, I mean, if merit pay, I don't know.
No, it's not, it's not merit pay.
They use a different system than we do.
Okay.
We're not on the LAU system.
There a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a couple of seconds, at $1,747,794. Discussion, further, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Looks like a capital, special capital fund. It, uh, looks like it's down, $30,000 to $58,500. Motion, second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Perfect. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Board of elections and registration.
What, an election coming up?
It's down, 95,000, $36.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hello.
So it's down because we don't have any elections next year?
Um, no, I just, I went down to 2019's budget, roughly.
We have all the municipalities next year.
Mm-hmm.
They reimburse, don't they?
They do, and it'll be 100 percent this year, because of our vote centers. 100 percent of what's spent on the election, not 100 percent of the budget.
I don't know, you give me that look, usually when you give me that look, you want to yell at me for something. Feel like I'm at home.
So, the budget is down?
I just, the, that reduction, that was the only thing I thought, that was, wasn't that with the new-
Forty thousand of it was for the, uh, the employees.
New employees, and then it was a reduction in those other line items, so that's, we rolled that in.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion, couple seconds, at seconds at $711,474. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Make the motion for the 1337,200.
13.
I'm on the clerk general fund.
Clerk general fund.
Second.
Next on my book. Hang on.
Clerk general fund down, $4,340. Like Mike said, $1,337,200. Motion second, discussion.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Keep going. Clerk perpetuation, up, $172,445. That's what it is. It's up $28,592. Looks like medical life.
Motion for discussion and, uh-
Motion.
Jessica, you want, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion.
The medical life, is that folks planning to take insurance that weren't, or additional people, or what's?
I added a second salary last time.
What?
She added a second salary.
Okay, so that's just paying for that.
Yeah, went out of the general fund and into the perpetuation fund.
Gotcha. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Elected officials training, $2,000.
Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Clerk new 4D, down $7,934, eighty-five thousand, 439. Motion second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Clerk new 4D, down $7,934, eighty-five thousand, 439. Motion second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
That fund, real quick, it is in jeopardy of being depleted within the next few years, Tony and I were talking about it, so it's okay this year to fund the salary, but after that, it may not have enough money to handle all of that.
Don't be used to it.
New 4D, yes. It only has one salary in it.
It's the Witten rule.
Burn it.
We're going to have to, once we get going, we really probably need to take a look, work with the auditor's office and take a look at all these different funds, we're kind of shoving things in to get a, to an understanding what we're, what's going to come back and bite us in a couple of years. So, you got some requests, there, you got a little letter here, is there anything you want to talk about, employees?
Um, I just-
This is just an election night workers increase, is there anything?
No, just why some of the line items increased.
Gotcha. All right, are we good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Health is the same.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Local health maintenance, $280, $92,990. Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Tobacco fund.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second at $69,365. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Supplemental and abuse.
Wow.
$80,605.
Motion.
Second.
Motion a second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Biroterrorism response grant, $84,744.
Motion.
Motion second. Second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Health grant.
Motion.
Second.
Same, $122,121. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Immune vaccine supplemental.
Motion.
Second.
Motion a couple seconds at $261,120. Is this the grant that we just got? That supplemental grant that we just got from all the-
For doing COVID vaccines.
Vaccines.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Epidemiology lab.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. COVID workforce, workforce co-op.
Motion.
Second.
Motion a second, $246,748. Discussion.
This is going so well, I hate to say anything, but I do want to make sure and call your attention to some 144s that we submitted. Should I keep my mouth shut?
You're going to give us money back, talk.
No, no, tell us what's going on, tell us what's going on.
Basically, what we originally submitted for was to move our PR person from part-time to full-time. When we originally hired him, there was discussion he should be full-time, and we thought we would ease into it a little bit, and definitely, he should be full-time. When we originally submitted this, we submitted it under that workforce development grant, but of course, you know how that is, that's a grant, and so we can't sustain that long-term. Since then, we've had some changes in staffing, and so we would like to remove a full-time nursing position, put him in as that, it won't change, make any changes to our, what is it, 1159? And then we have a full-time nurse who wants to step down to a part-time position, so our numbers are staying the same as far as nurses, we're losing seven hours of work, of man-hours, is it, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, that we are basically moving our PR person from part-time to full-time, and we are moving one of the nurses from full-time to part-time.
And you're putting the PR person in a nursing position?
Um, well, not necessarily, the salary will drop down, he won't get the same salary as a nurse, he would get the same salary as our environmental and food positions.
So, does that need adjusting at all, or?
No, it keeps the money the same.
Okay.
There's no change in the money.
They need to submit something there.
Right, so, we have, we thought we could come before you, I guess, then in December, with those changes, if you want us to, but that's kind of where we were going, we had to submit this before that happened.
Okay.
Now, I would, I would say, let's, if you're going to agree to it, let's do it as part of the budget process, so we could roll it into the salary ordinance.
Okay.
Rather than amend the salary ordinance literally minutes after it's approved.
Okay.
So, are these people, are they ready to do this now? Like, are the, the nurse ready to go to part-time kind of now?
No, she's not ready to go, so she, her plan is basically to use out what's left of her PTO and vacation, and she thinks that will take her to about the beginning of the new year, so once that happens, to get him in there.
But we can do it on paper now.
Yeah, it wouldn't be until 2023.
It's for the 2023.
Right.
Right.
She'll be all paid out by-
Right, right.
By December 20th, which is the first day of the one, first pay period of 2023.
We would have to do the math on that, I don't know exactly where she stands.
Because that makes a big difference.
December 20th, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Never taken, I think it's Sunday before.
So, you know, Tony, you already know what positions, you're speaking up, you know what positions.
I do know what the plans are, we can talk a little bit about it, that said, I don't know the timing of it is, and that makes a big difference whether it's going to happen in 2023, or whether it can be adopted as part of the statute ordinance in 2022 for 2023. You know, but it's, you've got a really sticky time period there.
Right, right, okay, we'll have to double check that.
So, on the 144, this, this position you're talking about is communications PR coordinator?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, and that salary there is, so, he, he's going from wherever he is now, a 49,542?
Yes, based on the current salary that we are hoping would also be increased, just like the, the others will be increased, so he'll be making the same as the foods and environmental positions.
And that number's based on?
Uh, just based on the fact that he doesn't have any supervisory requirements, and so we thought he would slide nicely into that same level of them, he's a degreed professional, and that's why we thought it would fit nicely in there.
That'd be helpful to talk with Rhonda, too, to see where, what class, specific classification he might fall into, to see what that range should be, to make sure we're not deviating from what the plan.
Yeah, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know of any other departments that have a PR person.
Well, even though, they, even with that, they would place him in one of the many other categories based on collective, you know, experiences and job duties, and that's what I think.
Sure.
And then I don't know if you noticed, we did ask for a $2 increase possibility on
our part-timers, so that we could possibly move them up if necessary, we just have a few we would like to raise by maybe a dollar.
Where's your part-time now?
Um, they are varying, like our food service workers right now, I think this is correct, Chris, up to 21, our nurses up to 25, clerical up to 17, so all of those would just-
We bumped up one, $1.
Are they at the maximum of what you've been allowed to put them at now?
I don't think-
Some of them are, yeah, not every-
There's have a few that are new, you know, brand new, and so we didn't bring them in at the same rate that somebody had been there for a while.
You're just wanting to raise them up $4, is that what you said?
No, $1.
$1.
Yes.
That's not reflected in this, though, right now.
I think on the 144, we did the up to, we increased by a dollar.
Did you increase these, all these are right?
Yes. So, like, the PHN was 25, it went up to 26. The clerical went from 17 to 18, those I knew off the top of my head.
So, can you get a new 144 into them? Because if you're going to move the communications coordinator up, or final reading?
Okay. Yep, of course.
And you're going to lose a, a nurse, so.
Half a nurse.
Well, yeah, we're not, not even, we're losing seven hours of a nurse.
All right. Yeah, if you can get the changes for the 144 for Tuesday.
Okay, okay, we'll get it done tomorrow.
All right, where are we at? The, the workforce co-op, did we approve that?
That's where we are.
Is there a motion a second?
Motion.
Motion second, further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
That went good. Click that little red button.
You want to give them $4 now?
They're cash flow.
Now, animal shelter, number's the same, $554,588.
Early green stuff?
So, hello.
Hello.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion a second on the floor, discussion.
Who, uh, vehicle repairs, I mean, how many vehicles do you have at the animal shelter?
Uh, the shelter transit and three animal control vehicles.
And no, no repairs needed next year?
The three tri, the three animal control transits are currently under lease, so those are done through Curry Ford.
As part of?
The lease agreement.
Because they're, well, they don't even, they even changed oil, too, they, there's no maintenance, oh, no, right?
I'm sorry?
But at least, you don't, you don't pay for anything, right?
Right, yeah. Uh, we had to pay for one tire replacement recently, but that's it.
So, uh, so where is that lease in your budget for those vehicles? $10,000 leases all four vehicles for the year?
Transit is not under lease, it's just the three animal control vehicles, uh, there is also money in, I believe, the supplemental for additional payments for the leases.
Okay.
Right.
So, total at 22,000?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah.
I'm good.
I got nothing.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the different, just seeing if, we're working out of, what, five different funds here? Shelter fund, the supplemental, fees, donation.
It's changed.
All right, was there a motion a second on the 554?
Mm-hmm.
588, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Animal shelter fees, 103,671.
Motion.
Same, motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Animal shelter supplemental, 199,940.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Animal control fees, um, $67,367.
Motion.
Second. Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right.
Animal shelter donation, 145,000.
Motion.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What do you have in that, animal shelter donation?
Little over a million dollars at this point.
Any thoughts or plans or ideas on what you might do with that at some point?
It just came under my control at this point, so, uh, we did put some money into new fencing for the outer runs for the animals, as well as put toppers across all of those, so we do not have any escape artists anymore. Thank God. And at this point going forward, I don't have any immediate plans.
Are you expecting, was it, wasn't that like a, somebody had passed away and that's the money you expect?
Right.
No, it was our major contribution, $853,000.
Wow.
In charge. It'd be nice if it happened every year, but.
So, you don't have any big plans for that money?
At this point.
We could just shove your general fund right into that account for two years, you'd be pretty sad.
I'm not sure the animals would appreciate that.
Better spot.
Well, I, I mean, if there's anything we can shift over to that fund, if you would give it a consideration, think about it, I mean, out of your general fund.
Absolutely.
There's, you know, if you're sitting on a million dollars, you know, if there's stuff we could put it to use, um.
I would assume there's also potentially some sort of restriction on the use of it by the donor, right?
Nothing to mind.
So, do whatever you want with it.
Yes.
Sue the attention as long as the benefits of animal shelter.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, there's household bedding, there's vet services, 50,000, just, I mean, there's some thoughts as we wander down this path here over the next week, folks, so, well, think about that.
Thank you.
Come back with a plan.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Happy night.
Expo Center. Expo center.
Weights and measures.
Did I miss something? Weights and measures?
Should we wait for the weights?
No.
Come on up, yeah.
And weight and measured.
I just wanna say one thing.
Uh-oh.
Listening to these budgets, and mine's only 78,000, sounds pretty good.
Oh, it does. I can't wait to say motion.
78, weights and measures, 78,000, $50 weights. Should I look to see if there's any unused money in your budget?
He is asking.
Nah, he's just sitting on a cash, you know, pile of, not really, I mean, where's Andy Bozak at? He'd be firing away at you right now.
No, he's asking for a recent his part time.
You got it?
I am asking for a raise for the part-time guy.
Currently at $15 an hour?
That's what he's making, yep. He's been here about, he's six years, and he's never had a raise, so I'd like to give him something.
He's been at 15 for six years.
Yeah. He works 25 and a half hours a week, so.
He requested 18?
I was, you know, when I hear everybody else asking for a little bit more, I think 18 is even less, but that's what I put in the budget, so.
What are you spending out hourly now? Can you sustain that?
I'm sorry?
He has no-
Out of the hourly, are you spending anything out of it currently?
Every penny.
Yeah, you mean what I have now? I have 20,000 here now.
Right. And you're spending all 20,000 dollars out of it?
19,880, I think, at 15 dollars an hour.
So we could assume this $3 or $3 to $5 increase you're asking for is gonna result in an additional appropriation sometime in, uh, July, August?
Yeah, it'd be, 18 dollars would be 23,868 dollars. So it'd be an increase of 3,978.
Plus the FICA.
Plus FICA.
Plus FICA.
For part-time.
For FICA, yeah.
It's not in your budget, it's in the commissioner's budget, but it's still in his budget.
What are you spending on training and education?
Right now, we, our conference is not until November this year, it's usually February. Um, and that's a little different this year because it's 50 mi- it's less than 50 miles. So we're not gonna use all, you know, that this year as much. But the thing is, is I use that money also to transfer money into, so my equipment, so I don't have to come in here and ask you guys for money for equipment and stuff.
That's your honey hole?
Yeah, it is. He's teasing.
All right. So, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. So just make sure that, um, you're here to ask for that, whatever you're gonna ask for.
On Tuesday.
On the 144, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We're gonna break ourselves.
We've already-
Who's got the?
Trying to nip it by a little bit.
Expo already?
Expo.
I'll be the easiest one tonight.
I forget, I'm depressed.
No, that was pretty easy.
Make the motion.
Second. Motion is second on 616,145 dollars. Discussion. That's it? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Thank you.
It was easy.
Nothing?
Thank you.
Got any money you can give back or something? IT, what we were waiting for all night anyway.
Look how easy it was to approve her budget. You can just do that, yeah.
What do you got? Same?
Yeah, same. Same as it's been for years.
You're not asking for anything, we gotta be able to take something back. Where's Andy Bozak at?
I'd be missed.
There's a, there's a number in front of you.
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for discussion. Uh-oh.
You got some.
Hourly, you're not using hourly?
Well, hourly was set aside for any, like, um, if we had a big equipment move, like when we did the courthouse to 157, hire, you know, hands to help with that. It was also meant to help with the print shop, which we couldn't find anybody to help in the print shop. But just today-
You spent 18,000?
No. But, um, the new director of Veteran Affairs stopped to see me, and we've been doing some of their scanning and document archiving for them, and he just has tons of stuff in the basement, and he's running out of room for it, and asked if we could scan all of his documentation. And to do that, I would have to hire a part-timer.
We're gonna give him.
So are you suggesting you're gonna hire a part-timer for-
Dedicated to scanning that project, right. And I would estimate that it'll be all next year. He says he's got a lot of stuff.
Why, I guess, why are you scanning? Why is that, you have the equipment to scan, is that-
Yeah. He has no budget to do that.
By the way, that's, that's a very nice gesture on your part for the veterans.
What are you spending out of there? I mean, did you spend anything in 2021?
For-
What's?
You've done scanning for other departments, right?
Yes.
Yeah, cause they have-
Okay.
Hourly is new this year, we didn't use hourly last year.
What about, uh, printing other than, uh, office supplies?
That's the whole budget for the print shop.
You've only spent 4,000 this year?
So far, yeah.
4,800? Remember you combined the bud- you combined the budgets.
Is that normal at the higher, a part-timer to assist some other eight departments with scanning, or just-
I haven't done it before, I'm just, like I said, it was, they don't have a line item to sustain it, so I do.
So what's with the, the printing and other supplies? Why is it so, why have we only used the 4,800 in a $15,000 budget? Is that-
I would-
What are we normally spending out of that? I know that was in the print shop's budget before. What were we spending out?
Well, the print shop's still alive and well, it's just we combine the two entities into one.
Is there a motion in second?
Yes.
Further discussion? Just letting, letting leave off like that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Thank you.
Feeling I see some money in there, though. World Opera House.
Good evening.
528,542. I think there's an increase in contractual services of 6,652.
And you know what? That's actually, um, from a, additional from last year when we had an encumbrance, so we can pull that right out.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, not part of the general, but-
So back to 22 number, Scott?
Yes.
I make the motion, 521, 890.
Second. Motion a couple seconds, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Looks like you got your grant.
Mm-hmm.
$9,530.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're like, $600,000 to the bad to give out raises?
No, not really.
No, not really?
I thought it was 680. I didn't think they did that good.
All right.
So we made progress today, Vicki.
Yeah.
We started out at 485.
So we talked about, um, with what we did to 911. We moved stuff out of their budget, their, uh, foundation budget. What, how much was that?
It was a total of, uh, 128,500.
So, in anticipation of, what, moving, maybe some things from the, this budget. So out of this, the commissioner's budget, we're paying for FICA and PERF for E911. What was your thought process, Vicki, on moving stuff, the, to finish that movement?
Um, okay, because those, those two items come out of foundation budget fund, we would put FICA and PERF in foundation budget fund for E911. So we don't change foundation budget fund. But then, that would reduce the FICA and PERF in the commissioner's budget by that same amount. Now, of course, FICA and PERF is gonna go increase after the changes with all the salaries, but we would be able to, we would be able to exclude that one amount from FICA and PERF. Oh, we didn't finish the-
Do you understand what we, what we did?
Okay, yeah, let's-
Understand? What we're trying to do here, we put a little bit more into the 911 budget that's got a million dollar, 1.4 million dollar surplus in hopes to kinda shift some things around. So can we reduce that number in the commissioner's budget, FICA and PERF?
Yes, we did.
You did already?
Yes.
We gotta ask them. Is that okay, guys?
Yeah, I mean-
Thank you.
So, is there any other, so in what we've been doing, I, I think you guys got the email, right, Friday, trying to find line items that are underused? Or if there's things with you guys, it's a little different, you know, we had, um, just looking at shifting things around, I don't think.
Is there a budget you wanna start with?
Well, I guess we could just stay in the general fund. So we've got, looking at you guys, um, looking at auto truck and equipment. It's like 2020, you only spent 6,000. It's like 2021, you spent 7,450. Looks like this year so far, you've spent 9,650, if I'm reading that right.
For which one?
Auto.
Auto truck and it-
3200. So there's only 20,000 budgeted anyway, right?
Yeah. So, okay, we're just looking at underutilized line items.
Or let us ask you, have you, have you guys discussed it or come up with suggestions on what we might wanna reduce?
I mean, where are we at in contractual?
So contractual services, uh-
I mean, general fund is not bad. Postage will go up.
173,000 in contractual. Looks like, um, you've been spending, you've spent 171,000 in 2020. I don't, you know, I don't know exactly what that was. You jumped up and spent, must've done an additional here in 2021, 279,000. So far this year, you've expended 111,747. I'm sure those are project-based, right?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure that 2021, I'm sure it was high because that's when we did all of our capital improvements.
So that's 100 and, uh, 173,000 there. Let me look at some other line items that are highlighted that are significant anyways. What's the $10,000? You've spent zero so far this year, I'm sorry. Building liability and comp?
No, that was, um, all official bonds.
What's that?
All official bonds is the line item that nothing's been spent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so what is that? I need glasses.
Bonds?
All of it, all, all official bonds.
That's the bonds that you guys pay for all of the officials, but we think it's being rolled into the GIS now.
Is it possible that it's only as part of your bond?
Yeah, probably is if it's not. Yeah. So there you go, you got 10,000.
Take 10,000!
We got it.
Don't ask again.
Well, should we do all of it? I mean-
So unemployment, certainly we're not paying unemployment right now, right? Everybody's working, everybody that wants to work. Looks like you've spent $6,000 out of that so far this year. Last year you spent $20,000. Looks like in 2020, obviously that was gonna be COVID, I'm gonna guess.
I mean, that's just kind of unpredictable.
Is that something that, Scott, I mean, dealing with, I, I don't know who deals with?
Well, unemployment is, it is on the cycle, so that is one of those items that if we needed to come, it's looking different for 2023 than it looked at 2022. It's obviously something we would be responsible to pay-
Sure.
-one or another. So over the years, what was, uh, 20, what was the last two?
2021, you spent 20,000. 400, 20,553. This year, you've only spent 6,721.
So I, I think there's a little bit of, given that number.
Yeah.
I mean, if we dropped it to, if we dropped 20,000 out of it, I mean, it still leaves you with 25,000.
Well, we'll be, if you leave that much in there, we'll be able to see if we're gonna need more in time to come to you.
To leave 25, so we cut 20,000? Fine. Now we're getting somewhere. Looks like contractual attorney, you've only spent 70,000. Are you not billing the county, Scott?
How about postage?
I mean, you've spent it every other year.
You could reduce it.
But you've spent it every other year, I mean-
No, that, that, that's just so far through this year.
Yeah. I'm just kidding, I mean, what's that, Sylvia?
Postage, I was looking at.
Postage, power, that kinda stuff just isn't going down.
We're just looking.
I think postage's gonna go up.
Yeah.
Did we do something, I'm sorry, stolen back where we started from, the auto truck and equipment, did we do something with that? That's 20,000.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you, you guys are spending 6,000, 7,000, 9,000. Is that-
That's kind of the catch-all. Some department needs a car fixed or something, and they don't have the money, and that's what comes from. So if that's been the two or three-year kinda spend, it can be reduced.
Which, you know, I don't know when we wanna dive into this question with you guys, but, you know, vehicles, what is, I mean, from department to department, some lease, some purchase? I mean, is, do we have, and I don't wanna get too far off, cause I wanna focus on, but, I mean, how do we deal, like, with some departments can lease? I mean, how many of them are coming out of your guys' budgets? How many are coming out of individual budgets? How many vehicles do we have? How many, you know?
I don't know how many vehicles we're gonna have, but the vast majority of them are coming out of the individual budgets. I think as we go through here, different places within the commissioner's budget, there might be a weight of measure of a vehicle, there might be a EMA vehicle or something along the way, just in the smaller departments that don't have as much of a budget and got paid out of here. But like plants or water, they're paying for all their own, highways paying for all of their own.
About 911?
I don't think, I think, I don't think a new vehicle's been bought for-
It's, no.
I think there's maybe two vehicles at 911. I, I believe we've already owned both of those. I don't believe those have been replaced.
So can we get, do you have, I mean, you have a, a list of our assets in the county?
Yes, we do. And we depreciate them and all that as part of our gap report, but yes, we do. And every time anyone adds a vehicle or another capital asset, they're supposed to, um, report that to us.
So we gotta insure all these, so we gotta have an accurate-
I know that, um, so in commissioner's office, does maintain a list for insurance purposes.
Right.
Yeah, we do have a list, we just don't, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Do we have a policy or a process in terms of who, what departments get vehicles and how many, and is it up to the department to decide what they're gonna buy, when they're gonna buy it, who's gonna drive it, and is there no-
No, they come to us. It's not a free-for-all, if that's what you're asking.
No, there's a policy, Mike.
And each department, we, and we keep track of each department. I think Tony had, uh, had mentioned it, is, you know, for insurance reasons, we have to keep that list because we're constantly, you know, we, when we have these, uh, sales, we're taking, we're taking cars out of, out of the inventory and bringing new cars into the inventory. So we have to keep, but it's fluent, it's always moving. And that's why, quite honestly, I can't answer- And that's why, quite honestly, I can't answer exactly how many cars we have today. I mean, that could change by the end of next week.
So before anyone buys a car, it comes through the Commissioner's office?
We have to sign the contract.
With the exception of the Sheriff's Department. But we, the contract, we deal with the contract, but we don't deal with... That's, as you know, that's all been changed, that's coming to you now.
So, so do we have a philosophy on leasing versus purchasing? And we've heard varied programs throughout different departments on how that's done? I mean, is there...
Well, we've been moving more towards leasing, so we have newer vehicles and better gas mileage generally, and we can turn them over and we know exactly how much we're going to be spending from year to year. But some of them are owned outright and they're not ready to get rid of them yet, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to move those departments to leasing yet.
And how do we, we had a conversation earlier regarding parks, who, for whatever variety of different reasons, maybe haven't bought a new vehicle since 2007. Is that surprising?
They have their own board, so I guess that one's probably a little different.
When you say vehicles, you mean trucks or cars?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, there may be a need there for a truck or two, but I don't see why they would need a vehicle, a car.
No, it was trucks, I believe he was talking about, yeah, the, basically, equipment, basically.
But that would go through their board.
And I would, I would assume that they would keep those a long time because of how they're using them. You know, they're not driving all over Northwest Indiana and they're going from one park property to the, to the next, and I don't believe they're even allowed to take them home.
I would, I would say generally, maybe to try to answer your question, Commissioner's departments and departments within this building have traditionally been, been pushed towards a leasing option because it's less of a capital investment upfront. It's more of a very rigid budget number to budget for for the rest of the year with the timeframe that the vehicle is going to sunset and normally during that period of time, there isn't any maintenance. Departments like health, departments like tourism, parks that are sitting with their own boards, I would say that that policy probably has not been pushed out to them as aggressively as it's been to the more localized departments under the Commissioner's purview, more to say. I don't even think the Commissioners would see, necessarily see, the contract for the health department car or the tourism car, but, but for squad cars and big highway equipment that's larger than a F-350, it's been the push towards the leasing for those reasons. Because as you guys know, it's difficult to deal with budgeting capital expenses that are peaking and valuing, and the lease, among other things, keeps your budget line relatively stable through successive budget sessions.
So the, I say a question, so does the board, if these departments have a board, do we have more exclusive decision-making on that then?
Yes.
Okay.
Do they insure it, the boards, or does that come back to the county?
I believe what ends up happening is, is that when that insurance numbers broke down, those payments are pushed back out to those departments with those budgets. So they make the payment through their budget. So whether it's coming out of the health fund or coming out of the tourism money or whether it's coming out of the park money, that's, eventually, that's what does pay for those.
All right. Do we, do we, do we know when the last time we said we authorized the department, I'm talking about Commissioner's purview, the last time that we authorized the purchase of vehicles for a department?
Probably last year. Probably last year we authorized them.
Um, the last...
That'd be last year.
Did we do one? It was this year for facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a...
A vehicle.
It was a pickup truck, I believe.
And then animal shelter, too. Right, didn't they just get something pretty recently? A new pickup dog pickup truck?
I don't remember that.
But that might have been two years, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a lot regularly.
All right. Sorry, yeah, I was...
But back to that outline, it is the miscellaneous expense for repairs, so if it's been running at, what it's been running at for three years, then I think that's, there's some small amount of headroom left in that line.
I don't know, you going to take it down to 10? Is that too low? 15?
The cost of car repairs, I think 15 just...
15, just take five out. I mean, it's, we're just trying to write sideburns, yeah. So just take five out, that's fair.
Again, I think that's something, I mean, one repair probably isn't going to cost...
This is where I'm going to get you guys, right here. This is where we're going to save all of our money, travel.
$1,000.
Spending 434, 564, 7, you guys going anywhere anytime soon?
I have not spent a dime of travel money in years.
It's a dime, I mean, whatever.
Of all of mine.
Sorry, go down the list. What was the contractual? What was, what's the assessed benefits? The county property assessed benefits, $5,000.
Those are property taxes on properties that are obtained from private citizens and it's kind of too late to switch it to a non-profit exemption, so therefore they have to pay property taxes on it. But I think Vicki, I think the process may have changed recently, although they have a new agreement.
The Commissioners have been approving at the request, well, no, wait a minute, they've been approving exemptions for like cities and towns that buy property and they don't want to pay property taxes. This is for the county that purchases property and there's delinquent taxes due on it, but you can exempt yourself from paying that, those taxes. We're not sure how much, how much have you, you haven't really used this.
No, 1,000, 1,200, 1,100, 1,100 basis...
And the state law has changed where the Commissioners can now...
You could reduce it.
Waive their, the taxes from being paid.
Would you, I mean, would you...
I would just take it down to like maybe 1,500 at this point.
All right, we take 3,500 off of that line item?
And the reason is, is the law change that Vicki is referring to.
Cradle services, you're not using it at all, I don't think?
I think 1,000 would buy a cradle right now.
Yeah.
Let's take 1,000, let's just...
Great.
I don't know, I don't see anything. Is there anything else? I don't see anything else in your general fund. So what did we, what did we cut, 33,000? Is there something else you guys see that maybe could be moved? I don't, um...
Let's see what, maybe not.
Anything of any significance, what? What do you see, Sylvia? Again?
How much are you paying?
No, we have to pay them.
Pay what?
The Commissioners. All right, do you guys see anything else that is underutilized or can be shifted around that you think out of this budget?
No, we, we met earlier today and we went over it page by page and...
All right. All right, well, there's a number for you on the Commissioner's general fund budget. Where's it at? 10,700 and... Have we cut 167,000?
Well, most of that was that FICA and PERF, that we already accounted for.
So there's 10,786,363.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. So that get us down to 250, 260,000? Getting closer?
Thank you, guys.
No, 367,243. We already accounted for that cut, earlier one, that 128,000.
Well, it made us feel good.
All right, lit, right? Is that what's in front of us, lit?
The other 33, general.
Oh, the federal, no, sorry.
That's all it's due.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Commissioners 1233, this is the federal inmates, correct?
Yeah.
374,700?
Second.
Same motion, second discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, lit. All right, so I guess we can just start the discussion here, at least, I mean, this is, I think I've read something back, yes, I don't know when it came out, that, because lit's always, what, two years behind? So that this, there's going to be almost a half a million dollar increase?
423,000.
So 423,000 dollars in new revenue, and I can't, I can't imagine, and that, that's 2020, correct? Okay, never don't, no, so, um... Yeah, so, we've been, so it's...
More or less, it's what people were earning when they filed their...
But there's no, there's no, there's no expectation of this going down.
It has been certified by the state, so we would anticipate...
Year after year either. We don't think that all of a sudden in 2020, when we make 2024 budget...
I wouldn't go that far.
So, so there's 423,000 dollars in new revenue in lit. You know, as you guys know, health insurance, ongoing problems, county to fund it properly, we find cash and we infuse that, that fund, whether it's supplemental lit, whether it, you know...
We are running pretty good this year, though, I have to say.
Yeah, for what it's worth, we're running under budget right now on...
Health insurance.
Can you give us a brief update on what it was in 21 and what we're anticipating in 22 and what we should expect for 23?
I think for this year, Scott, do you have the numbers? It was like 10, 10-2 this year?
I believe 21...
I didn't bring it with me.
Just so you understand, the health insurance runs on a slightly different calendar year than this fiscal budget, but 21's number, I believe, was around 10,400,000, but that is an all-in number, including HSA contribution, short-term disability, the accidental death, and life insurance. And I believe today's meeting, we were told that for 2022, that number was around 10,800,000, was what they were expecting at that point.
Flat.
Flat, and as of five months into this report that we reviewed today, five months in, we're about, give or take, a half a million under budget. So we were tracking well at the five-month point for this report.
And when does that start? Five months, so it's, where are we? So the year end, April?
So if we want to budget appropriately for 23, we should budget...
Around that 11 million. At a, at a minimum would be the guideline.
And based on the budgets that have been presented or that we've looked at, Vicki, where, how close are we to that 10-5 or whatever you want to call it?
We would have to get that for you, but I believe it's not more than 9 million.
That we have kind of targeted for that so far?
That's budgeted from all the different funds. We could call up what we have in our system, but this doesn't include the contribution from tourism, recycling, and airport, because they're not in our system. So we can show you what, what are we, we're looking at this year's, let's just look at this year's budget, because it would be hard to do. So just in 2022, we're budgeting 7, 7.1 million, but again, we have to include those other budgets which aren't in our system, and we, we would have to look up all of those. So it's, it's, you know, under 8 million.
Pardon me?
It's around 8 million that we're budgeting.
We're short. Fair to say?
Well, didn't you just say we should be budgeting closer to the 10-point-something million? Did I hear that?
Right, but was that the question now, or how much are we budgeting in 2022?
No, I'm, I'm curious about 2023 budget.
The expected is 10-8.
10-8, okay.
And so far, we've budgeted nine or something.
For 2023?
Yes.
We, we would have to get that. It's not a major difference, it's been some small increases from some of the departments. That's the problem, we're not budgeting enough on the, on the revenue side.
And that's my point, frankly.
Yeah, exactly.
And we're talking about $500 here and $1,000 here.
Right.
And we've got this elephant in the room that we've got to make sure we cover that before we start worrying about some of these other things.
So with that, with an extra 423,000 coming in for lit, is there, you guys opposed to maybe pushing 300,000 of that into the employee health insurance?
367.
It's okay with me, I mean, we didn't budget for it because we knew you had some things to pay for.
Yeah, I mean, we're chasing, we've been chasing health insurance, we know that, it's why we, why we talk about employees' wages, it's a total package. I mean, health insurance is a cost that goes up every year that we're paying for also.
I will have to say, though, it's still under when we started revamping it. It was over 12 then.
Yes.
So we're keeping a handle on it.
Yep, no question.
The expense side has been improving, but not the revenue side, and you need both to...
And one last thing on that, the health insurance lost about a half a million dollar appropriation when the hospital, the original hospital interest fund finally...
Yes.
...depleted, so that was one of the places that created the whole...
So, all right, so we're on lit, so we're on longevity and other, let's just start there, because we kind of got an overall number we're looking at as we go through. I don't think they've made any changes, so other equipment, do you guys know what you're spending on your capital outlays, longevity and other, 227,219? Do you know what that?
That's elections, equipment, maintenance.
Other equipment, oh, is that the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Longevity's longevity.
Perfect. So then...
And the maintenance agreements are elections.
Okay.
Might be some other stuff in there, too.
So then the Commissioners, medical, life insurance, is that the line item we would add 300,000 to?
Yes.
So can we add 300,000 to that line item? DocuWare Power, can we like...
We can't take anything from power.
Work four days a week or something, three days a week in here and shut the power down? Contractual services, 418,000?
There's probably a little wiggle room there.
What do we...
I think we have about 200K left right now.
Do we know what's left in that line item?
Okay, which line item again?
It's contractual services on Commissioner projects.
Yes. This is one that we noticed that last year, I think you, you left unspent about 14, 14%. I think you, you left unspent about fourteen, fourteen percent.
Looks like twenty percent last year?
This year, they spent twenty percent so far.
Oh, this year.
So, they spent a little sixty-seven thousand, five ninety, of the three hundred and thirty thousand that was budgeted, and they're asking for an increase to four eighteen this year. That was as of, I think I prepared this on Friday.
So, contractual services, this line item, so in 2020, you expended two hundred and eighty-five thousand, 2021, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, so far this year. Is that right? Hundred and fifty...
We spent a little bit more since last...
Sixty-seven thousand?
I think the increase was for phone, wasn't it?
There's some phone leasing in there, yeah. Coffee leases, new coffee machines, where coffee leases get paid, new coffee machines get purchased.
Our insurance deductibles get paid out of there. Weights and Measures Truck.
EMA's truck lease.
Where'd Harper go? We can take his vehicle out if he's not here.
Work comp developed.
He can walk to the gas station.
But there is...
So...
Yeah, there's some extra there.
So, what do you think? If, if we cut that budget down to like fifty thousand, I'm just kidding, so like, what? Throw a number out there, and...
Three hundred thousand.
Is three hundred thousand what you think is a fair budgeting item, line?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I'm, right now, I'm looking back at your general fund to see if, you know,
Right.
something matches, like, that we could push into that.
So, yeah, maybe cut the general fund, but then move it into lit.
Yes, so...
If that's amenable to the...
If, if there's a fair amount that he's, you know, Commissioner Biggs just said, you know, maybe cut a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so then what? What is...
Do you want to do that, or put it into health insurance?
Well, me anyways, is still focusing on trying to get to that number for, you know, our employees to, you know, the raises and stuff.
Right, right, right. Well, are you only going to increase this budget by three hundred thousand, or four hundred thousand? Because we know that there's going to be four hundred thousand coming in new revenue next year.
Yeah, no, I got you, so we still, yeah, we got more to do, I, I see what you're saying. So, we got another hundred thousand that we could push over, so potentially, we could have, if, if you're saying the three hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand there, and we only, we've got, we've got another hundred and twenty-three thousand, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there. If I did my quick math, I mean, if we could pull two hundred and fifty, no, you're looking at me like I'd...
Where'd you get that first number?
The, well, he's saying that we could cut this contractual services down to three hundred thousand dollars. So, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand that we could take away from that. So, we can move something from their general fund into that.
We can move a hundred and twenty-five thousand to contractual services and the general fund.
Yes, and then, we also...
They don't necessarily adjust that line item.
Yeah.
They can just use that line item for spending.
So, what about...
So, just reduce the general fund, how much is the general fund contractual amount?
One seventy-three.
Reduce it down to zero.
Well, you break down to twenty-five grand is the...
Twenty-five?
For what, contractual services?
They already took out of there, wait, what?
One seventy-three.
I remember you guys knocking that down.
Fast, here. You back in their general fund?
Yeah.
Did we not touch that hundred and seventy-three thousand?
No, we didn't touch it.
So, okay, can we, then, can we...
What's the corrected number?
Do you want to leave something in there?
No, zero that out, right?
Zero it out.
Zero that out, and we'll take it out of lit.
Zero that out, then we leave, then we just, do we leave that contractual line item number the same?
Maybe just leave it a little...
Leave it, so now, just so you guys remember, then, that we just shifted, you know, if you've got room to play in that, that's a hundred and twenty-five, but we kind of added another fifty thousand, so basically, that's three fifty, so maybe we've got twenty... I gotta catch up with myself here, maybe we got, what, forty-seven thousand or some, I mean... I'm also looking at the new money, the four hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Right.
So, we budgeted three hundred thousand in health insurance out of that, so we had another hundred and twenty-three thousand we could budget from that new money, that we could shift from their general fund, but we just added, Commissioner said, a hundred and...
A hundred and seventy-three?
Yeah, which I think, Jim, you said a hundred and twenty-five, but we put a hundred and seventy, so there's fifty, so...
So, we got a cut there.
See the math I'm trying to do.
I think I said a hundred, you said a hundred and twenty-three, but that's fine. That's fine. There's about forty left.
About forty left, you think that we can move out of?
Forty-five left.
What is it?
Well, it comes with four sixty-eight, seventy-nine, you can just do four sixty-nine.
Four sixteen...
Andy, if you're going to increase that contractual services by another fifty grand? What was saying, in the lit fund?
All right, I gotta catch myself back up, so...
So, we had it at four twenty-five.
Then you, what, Jim, you said, I thought you said three hundred would be fair, three hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that was a hundred and twenty-five thousand you were going to cut.
So, on that hundred and twenty-five, we took a hundred and seventy-nine and changed it to the general fund, so we left about fifty grand.
Fifty grand, so...
Difference.
So, basically, then, if we...
Then that fifty grand would come off the one twenty-three difference.
Yes, yes, correct, so what's, what's one twenty-three minus fifty?
Somewhere around seventy-five, seventy-seven.
Anybody fast, I don't know. What is it, seventy-three? Seventy-three thousand? All right, so then, is there something we can move over that's roughly in that ballpark? That you got, I mean... That's why Andy's not here.
So, what are we putting contractual at?
Don't confuse me anymore, I'm already confused.
Four-H premiums and... Veterans?
Are we looking, we looking for seventy, about seventy-five thousand?
Right.
All right, here, I got, here, here's an idea, so this is, it's not mine, but... Hold on, so, what if we moved... What if we moved two-year custodians over into it? Two-year custodians, they're making thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and nineteen, that's seventy-four thousand, what if we moved two custodians? Don't you already have a custodian in here somewhere? Don't we, you have employees, and you have facilities in here already.
We have facilities, yes.
So, what if we just moved a couple of facilities, some, two employees over there? What if we moved a two at thirty-seven thousand, and scratched that from salaries, then?
Are they going to get raises?
Yeah, all employees, yeah, they're...
I mean, it's just going to throw the number a little.
No.
It's going to be higher.
That's, that's, that, that works, you could also just move disposal, four-H premiums, and veterans' burial, and get you close to around the same number.
I don't care.
Okay.
Whichever, I mean...
Yeah. Did you guys catch that?
Uh, no. Disposal, veterans' affairs, and four-H premiums?
Mm-hmm.
So, take the general fund, move to lit.
It's veterans' burial.
I'm sorry, but I knew that.
So, veterans' burial's twenty-five, four-H is twenty-nine, four-twenty-five, and disposal's twenty-five, so...
That's good.
That makes sense.
Seventy-nine grand.
That's great, Scott.
That hurt my head.
We have to create the line items.
We have to redo.
You want to take a five-minute break? All right, we'll take a five-minute break.
Do we, we have to redo this? Do we pass this?
Yeah, well, that's going to change, yes. Yeah, we'll have to go back. Thank you, thank you, sorry. I was sweating, I was sweating earlier. I'd have lost five pounds today.
Laura, what did we finalize contractual services as?
Uh-oh, wait a second, we got to take care of you guys, don't we got to? Uh-oh. Throwing that, that, what's it called?
Sun dog.
Sun dog, yeah, dog.
I was getting confused between if we're cutting it, or just keeping it.
We're not cutting it in lit, because we're putting...
But were we increasing? But I mean, are we increasing contractual?
Because you cut a big amount, they just...
We said we needed...
The original... Okay, I'll keep it, I'll be right back. That's a real trick.
Sit yourself down, take it to the floor.
That'll be fun to watch.
Four eighteen, I'm sorry.
So, Jim said go down to three hundred, so we were going to take a hundred and twenty-five off.
I, I think, I think what we could do to...
But we're taking over a hundred...
That's right, we're not going to do anything with that. You guys, we had a good idea at one point. Right, we're shifting, we're shifting... That contractual line item, so we're going to zero out.
Right, and that's likely, that has to be there, we got to force ourselves to do that.
That contractual...
Yeah, we're talking about...
So, it should go up to, sorry.
Tiffany's done, I've got the number.
It's about two, it's about, it's a sixty-eight.
Going that, though, they could have gone forward. You guys need a half a million bucks, or, we've got to have, we've got the slot.
The bulldog, or the alpha dog, or whatever.
Oh, I agree, a hundred percent.
We'll get to it, we'll get to it.
Okay, that's what I, oh, it's seventy-eight.
Good job, Laura.
Run, run, run!
Oh, no, I, well, I mean, because I'm, I'm thinking, it might have, it seems like Wild Wild West, if it's not a pre-oral, I mean... I don't know where I heard it, but I, I... So, that's kind of what I was...
We should bring it to four twenty-three.
They got...
We are budgeting more than the revenue.
The last meeting, with the last week, the guy who said...
That's kind of my honest worry.
Yeah, Ryan said that they got two, two vehicles. I don't know, they're, well, she told me, they're, they're dragging Ford, what did I say, Ford, uh...
What's that?
But do they have cars at all somewhere?
Yeah, they do.
Why?
Because they're, in an emergency, they got to come to work, no matter what, the two people. They're in charge.
Okay, so like, all of a sudden, people get sick and they got to come in?
Well, there's an emergency, or whatever's happening.
Oh.
There's two cars at one place. You can probably argue whether or not that even, would that be positioned in more...
Nice to meet you.
I'm guessing that, I don't know much longer, it's kind of...
It's not cold anymore, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm already, I'm already...
Oh, boy, this is fun, this year.
And I, and I guess that's, that's part of the whole point of bringing it up, is, because we're talking about compensation. So, either it is, or isn't.
So, Sylvia, I have to ask, this is my first accounting budget hearing, is it normally this lengthy anyway?
No, no, what is, what is happening? We are working very hard to get to a number, to do, to meet this wage, and that is, that is our goal. And the Commissioners are cooperating, they have the largest budget, so they have probably the most money, you know?
Right.
And their budget, their line items are kind of, I wouldn't say they're bad or anything, but they're, they're healthy enough that they can look at it, and and of course, if something happens, they can always come back to the council. So, it's, and they're, they're being very generous for us to meet this, so we can... It's, it's really a very cooperative, generous and cooperative, on the Commissioners' part, and working with us to meet this number, so that we can give this wage, can meet the criteria for the wager. Can make the budget. You know what I've tried to... Oh, thank you.
One of my favorite colors, especially of yellow.
Oh, well, thank you. It's one of my favorite colors, too. I actually have...
I had no idea it was nine and twelve right now.
I just figured, leaning over so much, I was broken up. But no, they don't usually get this involved, but we're having a tremendous cooperation here. What's that?
Something like, wanted everybody to have.
Thank you.
It's with the parks.
So, when there were any of these categories, they there to be... Undetectedly, or those, for those like, is that just a fund that's being fully utilized?
General fund will be, the money will be coming out of...
Well, there, I got it. Got it. That's pretty good.
Local end of tax.
Yeah, that's good.
It's not included in our general fund.
Mike, how are you?
Am I saying this right, Vicki?
I, um...
You understand what I'm saying?
I sleep like a baby tonight.
Carrying down from...
I'm sure we all are.
Is it like a game of rock and roll, I mean, is lit just something padded, where there's...
Well, we've, we got three hundred, well, four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of good money. The distribution of the lit was special, four hundred and twenty-three thousand. So, we're shifting stuff, we're in, also, yeah, not just that, not just, we have the four hundred and twenty-three thousand of money from lit. Three hundred thousand. Then, you know, we found that one line item, contractual services, it was four twenty-five. That's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. How many you have, you've been using, you have in over the last couple of years?
How are you doing?
So, it could, it was talking about, you can buy it, I mean...
So, you're trying to get down to your...
I mean, I'll leave far... Slow and easy. And, and, and it helps me sometimes, just for whatever, I was over, I was walking in her neighborhood the other day, and I was right across the street talking to her neighbor. She ignored that, as usual.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, it seems to be a conversation that we probably need to figure out a little bit.
I'm going to have a chocolate lab at my house next two days, and sure, that goes. I just hope it doesn't wreck my house.
It'll take you a little while, for sure. Okay, I appreciate it, Dan. It's, it's... It's, it's. I mean, we don't, we don't, you know, state industry. No, I shouldn't say that. I enjoy it. There are some people that do, that are really good at it, you know, but I'm, I'm, I mean, when it comes to dealing with the industry. Oh, what else you guys got for us?
The tail on that side.
I really, really had no idea it was nine o'clock, I was having so much fun. So, yeah. Well, yeah, just, we're, we're gonna have to re-vote on a number, though, I think. Let's, let's take a, let's take another look back at it, just to make certain. Oh, good, 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 good.
Boy, a share must be in a.
Thank you. Fun, fun, isn't it fun?
Well, we, we kind of tried over the last two years to, you know, remember, second reading was like.
Pretty, pretty exciting.
Five, six, seven meetings, and it was just, so we tried to. Yeah. Sham them into three, and this is what we're getting. You know, the four-hour meetings. But, I don't know, what do you want to do?
I think we should add more money. Of course, it doesn't matter.
Sylvie doesn't even blink, she's like.
I'm here. Where is everybody?
I don't know, we're, we're, Britner's out there, so.
Come on, let's go, guys.
Mikes, Mikes. I don't know, Mikes.
No, I'm good. Or where I sleep tonight.
We need more money in the budget.
Yeah, I think this is leftover from the original COVID.
It's probably.
I bet, I bet, I know, my brother. Just be uncertain, just waiting, I know, I know. All right, I think I've hit a wall.
Keep going.
Tiffany, you hit a wall, too? I hear you. Do we know, um, any scores from the baseball games? All losing. Somebody is. All right, do we have the, um, new number for the general fund, the commissioners' general fund? Maybe we can go back to that, and, because that number's changed, I just wanna. Right? So the new number is ten million, five hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-eight, we've cut four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Motion approved.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second discussion. Better run, all favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign, grade is passed. All right, so then, we've made no votes on Lit, correct? So, those are all new numbers on Lit. So let's, do you want to just glance at them real fast, commissioners, to see, I think.
On Lit?
Yeah, on the Lit, I don't, I don't know what they have pulled up yet, so yeah, Lit. Is that the total, is that, is that the total bottom line?
Yes.
Tiffany? So that's six million, six hundred eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars, that's an increase of four hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-five.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Do you agree with the?
Discussion.
Yeah, that's great.
Yes, you guys done a good job, yeah.
And, and that is, what is our estimated revenue in that? Are we, are we safe with that number?
We're running a little high.
A little high. I may not have that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, so you think, just a little, what the estimated revenue was?
If I remember correctly, what year did you add longevity? Last year, the year before?
A couple of years, probably.
Sure.
I think that was about that, that, whatever that amount is, probably about what we're running on.
We can move on, she's glancing, if you want, if you can find it, let us know, we'll have to. So, all right, move on, commissioners, non-general fund, we already got CCD. So, you guys submitted the same budget, but is there anything, and this is, I don't know, I think you guys, did you guys speak to the sheriff's department about, um, Bulldog or something, or? Hot. What is it? Sun Dog? Sun Dog, this has to do with the Motorola, that.
For the porting, porting of it?
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to work with the commissioners, we'll probably have to go back and cut all their budgets, too, so, I mean, the sheriff.
How much is that?
Forty-five thousand, wasn't it, forty-five thousand? Is there, I mean, do you know of a?
Probably, um. We could probably move, um. Forty-five thousand out of forty to one hundred into thirty-nine fifty to pay for that.
Were you, CCD, right?
Yep, buildings.
Buildings.
Up a lot.
So then, so contract, you want, you want to bump contractual, I mean, can you guys just cover it within that now? I mean, do we have to change the budget? It's just, I think it's just more or less.
I think we can cover it now, if you just transfer it from buildings into contractual.
You want us to do that, you want us to take buildings down forty-five thousand and put it into contractual?
Yes.
It's maybe forty-five thousand fifty, thank you.
So let's make it.
Whoa.
Just keeping it, uh, you know, put it around here, we'd definitely do forty-five thousand.
Make them find, yeah. All right, we're losing.
Has to add around to the fifty.
Come on, let's, let's keep it on the road, it's been late, so. All right, so that change has been made, perfect. All right, is there anything else? I don't, I didn't glance at CCD, dare to. Is that what we're on, CCD?
I mean, the bulk of that's power, we could probably, probably fit another fifty of stuff in here, if you want to move anything.
Maybe this is something we could just look at coming back if we've got to, I don't think, like, right now, it looks like there's some underutilization in, historically in consultants.
Did you, did you add any IT general fund? This time around?
Not, well, we potentially could, if he increases his, um, his hourly up a couple dollars, it's gonna cost, you know, maybe three or five thousand dollars or something, is that. But, looks like consultants, two hundred thousand dollars, you guys expended zero in, uh, twenty-twenty, and you expended, uh, sixty-five thousand in twenty-twenty-one, and it looks like this year you've kind of bumped it up a hundred and eighteen thousand. And you're budgeting two hundred and eighty-two thousand, so you're not even coming close, you got to halfway one time out of CCD, so, but I know that's restricted, so we'd have to really know what we're doing, you know, make sure we're putting.
IT added fifty-eight thousand.
Or did he?
In their maintenance agreements.
I would put some IT into this.
So my understanding is.
We can use this on IT.
My understanding is CCD could grow by like a hundred thousand, give or take.
Yes.
So if you wanted to add that fifty-eight thousand in maintenance agreements into that data processing and equipment line to relieve that out of the general fund. This is the component part of IT's budget, this is where the rest of IT's money is located, so that would, uh.
So then, between that and the sheriffs, that kind of adds a little over a hundred.
All right, so did you get that, I, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, yeah.
So, you said fifty-eight? Fifty-eight.
Wait, 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 the, the fifty-eight thousand was in maintenance agreements.
Yep.
And the fifty-eight thousand, not, not in data processing. Those are two different, one's a services line item, one's a capital asset combined item, so we have to add the fifty-eight thousand in there.
So we can't do it.
Add a maintenance line item.
Well, we have a maintenance agreements line item, don't we?
Yep.
Not in there.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do, look at the top.
It's up here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, so we can increase that to a hundred and eight.
Yep. Then, that's fifty-eight thousand closer to the bogey.
So what?
Sorry, um.
Well, to continue on with that, they've, they've got twenty-five thousand in consultants for twenty-twenty-three. IT does?
Hmm?
How much did you say?
Twenty-five thousand.
We could do that, too, but that's probably about it, because then we're at, what, do they have twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, increase to ten thousand.
Then we're up to like a hundred and twenty-eight. Added in.
Did you guys get that over there?
Buildings by forty-five. Because there was that buildings decrease, so it's not as much of that increase. So. It's the eighty-thousand. Yeah. Because there was that buildings decrease. Forty-five was a flop with the contractual, which was at. The net change is eighty-three.
We're trying to get to what, to increase this to a hundred thousand?
You guys have all the moves?
Yep, I got it.
So, all right, what's the bottom line of CCD?
So right now, it's, yeah, two million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight oh nine.
There you have it.
Move to, move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same signs, so you, did you go back and take that out of, uh, IT, we're good there? Perfect. Garage fund, fourteen thousand fifty, fourteen thousand five hundred, same.
Motion approved.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hospital sale proceeds, contractual services, six hundred sixty-five thousand dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Um, cable franchise, the same, one point one million.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, um. I don't even know where this is.
Which one are you looking at?
Cable franchise, contractual services, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you guys don't use that very much at all, either.
Peter Bowe, stuff comes out of there.
There's a pretty large expenditure, I think, I want to have extraordinary, is it one fifty-seven, the KF's in one fifty-seven, so for both parts, I think we're not using. To that.
What can, a cable franchise is gonna be limited to usage also, right, same as CCD, it's.
I've never heard there was any limitation.
I was trying to look this up, but ran out of time, I believe it has to be related to the road, to expenses dealing with the.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way, exactly.
Maybe, but, can you find that maybe before third reading, or I'll try to look, I'll try to look.
Find it before the meeting.
Every freshman I remember, I can remember when, when it was originally passed, back in the nineties, it was, it has to, it has to, some, it had, whatever we spent, it has to, uh, pertain to something within our right-of-way.
And it's spelled out in the ordinance that the commissioners.
I think it's spelled out in state law. Yeah.
All right, well, we'll take a look, I mean, it, let's just.
Some nine-one-one comes out of there, right?
Cable franchise?
No.
I don't think so.
I think the lease payment in cable franchise is.
Right, the next thing is cable.
That would make sense.
Ninety-one system.
Pretty sure.
But it's, so it's underutilized, so if, if that's, if it's underutilized that much, then.
Did you remember?
I wrote it down.
Which one are you looking at, contractual services?
Yeah, contractual services. And you're saying that we pay Motorola out of that?
No.
The lease payment.
Thirty-seven, three hundred lease payments, that's Motorola's nine-one-one lease payment. The contractual services is separate.
Yeah, that's different. Peter Bowe is what comes out of contractual services.
Peter Bowe Attorney, yeah, and some expenses for Peter Bowe.
All right.
And then that roadway and taxiway, that is for roads, and that's where, that's the account that this, when you do projects, when the state reimburses eighty percent, that's where the money comes in and out, rotates out of that.
All right, so there's motion second, one point one, I think, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same sign, countywide CAD, nine-one-one system. Two hu- two hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred ninety-four, well, that's the Motorola, isn't that, what's that?
That's flow through cities and towns, right, I mean, it's, they pay us.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Is there a motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same sign, foundation budget, now, did we make those?
No, we didn't make those changes yet, but we will.
Okay. But there's. Sylvie needs some fuel. Anybody got any chocolate?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I have a Boatskay. Yes.
Get these young ladies some chocolate. Are we good?
Hmm, yes.
All right, um, so we have the foundation budget, there's an increase put in here on council on aging. Is that just a request? Or is that something we voted on earlier this year? That's just a request you put in?
That's the request.
What are they requesting?
They're, they're asking for an increase of a hundred thousand.
Oh, for drivers?
You got a, a letter back here. So everything.
This is another place where we have health insurance, so.
Yeah.
There's room to add to the health insurance, considering.
Do we have room in this budget anymore?
Well, yeah, we have to like. Because now we get the proceeds from the foundation, that's now the smoothing approach, so we pretty much are.
Locked in.
And what, what is that number? Is it about five-two, five-three?
This year, it was, um, I think it was five point eight, or four point eight, so it is a little lower.
But that was before smoothing, right?
No, that was our first smoothing year.
So we have that zero year, we're still adding in with smoothing.
So then we really don't have room in here, really?
No, there's not a lot of room.
Is anybody, is anybody mailed the only one here? What do you guys want to do, what's your? What is your? Pleasure? Joey, why are there two different budgets? Are you just, I see what you did, I think.
Some come out of, um, the general fund, some come out of the foundation, is that, do we have it on the foundation?
Yeah, all right, so we've got the foundation budget in front of us, there's a, there's a request. For an increase of a hundred thousand dollars.
New program.
Is that a one-time request, or is it?
There's.
Uh, no, that would not be a one-time request, um, unless gas prices dramatically decrease. We had to take salaries up from twelve thousand to sixteen thousand dollars, I'm looking at a shortfall of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and fourteen, we were doing twenty-five hundred rides. Now we're doing fifteen, I mean fifteen thousand rides, twenty-five thousand, fifteen thousand rides. The buses that we're supposed to get this year, told we're already not getting them. Board changed from gas-making gas buses to electric. The price of a new electric vehicle they're sorting us at, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That hundred thousand dollars would cover probably twenty percent of my share of buying a new, new vehicle. It's, it's out of control. I have no idea where we're going. We're a service to the community, but we will have to reduce. Right now, I'm on five drivers, full-time drivers, three part-time drivers. Six years ago, we had ten or twelve full-time drivers. We're, we're just hit, and I don't have funds coming anywhere else. And we lost nap tax credits because nap tax credits, we no longer fit into their pigeon hole where you want to be. The, the busing, advertising on the busing, that closed up out of Indianapolis. We lost twenty thousand dollars there. We're, we're looking at, right now, with my transportation budget, the way it was last year, down to about a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars short. My only option is to deal that hours that my drivers are working. We still have enough money to do our section eight housing. We still have our money for United Way for energy assistance. And we still have money coming in from the WIC to do the energy assistance pro, I mean, the emergency. The energy assistance program, which is about eight hundred thousand dollars for, you know, two thousand people. So we, we are a service agency, but transportation will have to be pulled back in. We have to, things with guidelines. I threw the hundred thousand out there. I don't expect it, it's not there, you don't find it anywhere else. I listen to everybody else, everybody else is sure I'm money and don't have it. We don't have it, we just, I just have to tell people, we're going to only do twelve thousand rides this year, or ten thousand rides. I mean, I don't have a volunteer workforce of drivers, so I don't know what to say. You know, don't beat yourself up over that. You know, if it's, if it's not there, is, if it's not there, I don't know what else to say.
All right, let's just, you guys read, take the information, ask for any, take the hundred thousand out. Let's just approve the budget as is in second reading here. Yes, he's got information in there, you want further requests? And it's something we're going to have to consider, but it's something that, I mean, this isn't the only entity we, we, you know, social service entities do we pay out of this, but.
So what do we have left here?
So it's just, the, the last year's number is four million, nine hundred and three thousand, two hundred twenty-four dollars, right? The same as last year? Did we just pass that? Is there any other increases we need in there?
What's the increase on the?
Forty-seven thousand.
Fund jail.
You're going to take out the fifty thousand from the.
Okay, yeah, all right. Jumped the gun here. What's, what's the, what's the bottom number? Take out the hundred thousand dollars for now. Something we're going to have to decide next Tuesday.
Right.
If that's what we want to take, go down that path of increasing, because there's really no room. We do it for one.
Exactly.
But it's, you know what he serves. So is that the, that's the accurate bottom number there?
What's forty-nine twenty-two? The forty-seven thousand dollar increase?
That's for the jail service, the medical service for the jail. The contractor quality, they increased three percent this year. I'm sorry, for twenty-one.
My suggestion on that would be to, I mean, you know, the, the federal prisoner money. I mean, I, I haven't looked at it, but, I mean, do you know what kind of?
That's in the, that's in the general fund.
Yeah, that's in the general fund.
Yeah.
We're trying to cut the general.
I see what you're saying, yeah, all right. All right.
I, I don't want to influence what you're saying, so.
Oh, you try all the time, don't stop now.
No, 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 but I did misspeak before. When I said what the foundation draw was, I knew something was wrong, and I just looked it up. The, the figure that I quoted was what we transferred into this fund from the holding account, because there was a balance, we only transferred what we actually need to fund the budget. So the actual distribution for twenty-twenty-one was five-point-four million. So you were more correct, Scott.
All right.
So you could increase that line a little bit.
So five.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying I misspoke.
I'm in a basket. Just once every ten years, so I'm glad to get one. I mean, you're right all the time, Vicki, don't.
Well, no, I did misspeak, and you were more correct than I was. So just, I knew something was wrong there.
All right, what do we got here? So what's the? Four million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
I, I do have just a quick question for Bruce, since he's here. The bus advertising, that's no longer, how did that program work, and why did it get discontinued?
They have a contract without Indianapolis, and like everybody else, they quit workers. So we only got five thousand this last year.
Can you find somebody locally to throw some adverti-? Can you find anyone locally to throw some advertisements on the buses to make up some money?
It was a unique program, because they sold the advertising, and they also installed the advertising. And there isn't any money that I found up here that's involved in those. And it has to be a contract that's approved through the NERMS. So the other agent, the meat line gets in on that, and the other, other agencies get in on that as well. And there's just been a very lack of effort coming out of NERMS, getting a lot of those contracts, and bus contracts. We don't even know where we're going with our bus, what's going to happen. Have no clue.
All right, real opportunity enterprise, is that, that's the general fund budget, seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars? Same? Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Four guys.
You done?
Don't go far. We definitely didn't want to talk to you guys real quick, though. We'll get through these real fast, and we'll have a brief discussion.
That was it, all this time?
All this time, what do you, I mean.
Questions.
Test of perseverance and patience. Neil, that's really what it was.
The wrong day to get an injection in my back.
Yeah, Jim and Lori, you guys don't mind sticking around for a minute, do you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I did, yeah, two minutes, because I know this is, this is running long. So I just want to acknowledge the, the impact and significance of the money that we get. Certainly during this time, you know, as we're hearing you guys going through this process, the challenges that you're having with wages, right? The challenges that Bruce is having with, with buses and drivers. You know, just as a reminder, you know, our wages are paid primarily through Medicaid. We don't have pricing power, and we're needing to compete with the general economy, trying to keep pace with trying to keep staff. We're an agency staffing three hundred and seventy people, three hundred and twenty-five of which are Porter County residents, which is, you know, which is significant. In, in our space, you know, the frontline workers, the direct support professionals in this nation right now, it's about a forty-two percent turnover rate annually. So think about the cost of, of hiring and training, right? For, for dealing with, you know, some of the most vulnerable population. Our agency overall, you know, we're probably at about a thirty-two percent turnover rate, you know, complete. So three hundred and seventy folks, we're annually just to stay flat, needing to hire a hundred folks a year, without even considering, you know, the growth of the agency. So the, the dollars that we get are absolutely significant. They're important, and we certainly, you know, appreciate it. As we're going through these times, I, you know, we've, we've had conversations with a variety of folks, and, you know, I would say, you know, look at these dollars as an investment in this agency as well. It's, it's not just helping the folks that we serve. Because, you know, while this is being done, we're also taking a look at innovative ways and new services that we can provide, that, that we do get a different stream of revenue. Camps this year, you know, that we served out at Lake Eliza, served the population of both individuals with and without disabilities, which is significant. And I know when the council member, you know, Brickner, talked about quality of life, we're certainly trying to do what we can to also address the, the topic of quality of place, not just life. And as we continue to develop our property out at Lake Eliza, a hundred fifty acres, that, I think, will truly become an asset for this county as well, even contributing to, you know, you know, to the parks almost, because of how we look at that property, want to make it an inclusive piece of property. So just really wanted to acknowledge that we do certainly appreciate the funds, and they are certainly well utilized. And, you know, even as such, it's, it's, it's a struggle, you know? And as I hear, you know, throughout, and certainly with our, within our industry, it's, it's, it's a tough go, especially trying to compete with the general economy. So I just figured, three minutes for four hours? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there a motion second, I think?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thanks for sticking around, thank you. All right, what do we got? One more, I think, Porter Stark, general fund. That's two million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second.
Thank you for your.
So we do have some handouts and.
Oh, very good, very good.
Should move you guys to the front next time.
That's guaranteed.
Give some, some positive news.
We'll take you up on that. But no, appreciate all, all the work, and just wanted to give you both the annual report that we do as an entire organization, but also our Porter County specific report, which you may recall is actually a requirement. We were able to finish it a little bit earlier this year, since it's based in the fiscal year, and wanted to give that all to you at the same time. So if you do have questions, I'm always available. You also will notice that it's not Mary Idstein sitting next to me. This is our new CFO, Andy Nielsen, Andrew Nielsen. You can go either way, really, but.
Andrew?
Andrew, please.
Andrew in writing, definitely. But anyway, we're going to miss Mary, but it's been terrific having this transition with, with Andrew here, and wanted to make sure you met him as well. The annual report shows some pretty exciting things that we're working on, some very innovative programs. We have a lot of parallels that Neil had just mentioned in terms of our staffing, recruitment efforts and retention efforts. We end up hiring about a hundred people a year and losing nearly that many as well, but we've been able to grow by ten or twelve staff every year for the last five years, so that's good even through the pandemic. I will gladly take any questions or, or anything you'd like to know.
Nothing for me at the moment. I'm sure as we move forward.
I'd like to know, do you have in beds? Are there any beds available in here?
Yeah, we have, our, our inpatient unit has normally sixteen beds, where, since the pandemic, it's been a ten-bed capacity. We rarely reach that. If we are over that, we work with our partners throughout Lake County or St. Joe to get people placed. But our average census on the unit, meaning how many beds are occupied, is about six-point-five normally. And even through the pandemic, when we had to limit it further, sometimes even to limit to three beds, our, our, our average census has still been around five-point-five.
But you do have room for sixteen.
Yeah.
And it's usually ten.
Yeah, you, you know, normally, actually, our average census is closer to seven, but we have capped our capacity because of double room occupancy. We've tried to reduce that through COVID.
Okay.
But, but it hasn't caused an, an issue with people getting treatment in an inpatient facility, if they're appropriate for our facility. There are sometimes medical complications and other things that happen.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service and liaison, and Craig as well.
Anybody, anything else? I think there was a motion second for the two million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you for hanging out for four hours. Four hours. All right. Vicki, we hit everything, right?
Sort of.
Sort of?
Okay, so the amount that we need to cut from the general fund is now whittled down to thirty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-eight still to go. So there's a few things that are pending. We know that your memo just went out on Friday, asking departments to take a look at their reductions. And I'm meeting with one department on Thursday to look at the budget. So if the other departments could just take a look who haven't been here tonight, you know, thirty-one thousand is not that far away from the goal. Also, there are some departments that do have other funds. Maybe they could agree to put those raises in the other funds?
I just want to be careful, like, I really would like this council next year to get going and really look at all these other funds that we're doing that with. I don't, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but.
Right. And I'm the one, I, I, you know, I have chosen not to use some of my funds that way, because I don't want to.
You've told us to stay away from yours, but jumping to everybody else's.
Not true at all.
No.
Not true at all.
No.
I'm teasing with you, but yes, I, I think we should take a good, an assessment of all those funds. I'm kidding, Vicki.
There are some funds that might not be able to sustain the raises, and that's going to be an issue.
Yeah.
That you'll have to deal with.
This year for next year, there's some of the funds.
What we did tonight? Are you saying that?
No.
Okay.
So, all right, well, we got to work on that. I mean, Commissioner Biggs and Blaney, can we have you for a few more minutes? I mean, we're here, I mean, we might as well make coffee. Scott leave you guys?
Yeah, he's got court tomorrow.
So, so I appreciate what you guys did tonight, absolutely. Diving in, we wouldn't have got there without that, working back and forth. And the last couple of years, we've done that, haven't we? You know, I think, and got a lot done. So there's, there's a lot we've still got to do. And the only way it's going to get done, in my opinion, is if we continue to do this, you know, and not be afraid to have these discussions. You know, Jim, you've laid out some things, obviously, that, that are, they're true. We got to get some things done. That, good night. Whether it's fire territories, we got to figure out ambulance services, absolutely, one hundred percent. Roads, you know, I think we've got to come up with a plan in the next week or so to figure out. I, I don't think anybody's opposed to funding, you know, that extra money this year. We did it last year, we did it for the last couple of years. You know, and we're, we're in a good position, I think we can, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes, not when inflation's at eight percent, not, you know, we, you know, we're, we're in a good position in the county. It's, obviously, it's difficult. But, you know, if we're smart, we can find money for roads this year, we can find money for roads next year. You know, we brought up, you know, a proposal to fund both the opera house and the center garage. We know both of those need to be done. You know, it didn't seem to catch any, any ground, that. We know we've got the jail to do. That is, we've got to dive right into that at the beginning of the year, if we want to, you know, maintain that.
Sheriff's squad.
You know, that's why, you know, so there's a lot. There's an absolute lot of work to do. But we, we've got to find a way to fund it all, and that, that, the only way we're going to do that is communication. Only way. We've been, we've been on the other side of things. I think we both know that ain't fun.
No, I, I don't, I don't disagree with any, any of that. Communication's important. But we have to understand, we're not always going to agree with each other. That doesn't mean necessarily, doesn't mean you're a bad guy, just means you have a difference of an opinion. And our opinions are formed, you know, you know, out of various, you know, for various reasons. And, but, you know, Jeremy, you're right. I mean, as long as we keep open communication, something's bound to, you know, good to come out of all of it. When you stop talking, that, that things start falling apart.
That means a lot, I mean, the, we, we, I think we, I didn't, I didn't look back. June or July, we talked about the road funding. We said, come back with a plan, next thing you know, you guys are passing it. Fine, well, I think, I think in theory, we kind of agreed to it, just come back and let us know so we can figure it out. Those are the kind of things I thi- you know, I think, just, I'm not speaking for anybody, but myself, at least personally, that, give me some time, give, give us some time to figure out, you know, how to fund things like that.
On that particular topic, is there, is there a plan in place or a thought in terms of how that should be paid for? The two-point-seven million dollar paving contract.
I think I spoke to you about it. You and I spoke about it.
How to pay for it?
Yeah.
And what was your suggestion?
I, I talked to Scott. I talked to Scott and that, you know, there was a portion of the art funds that would be available for that. There's some, some funds that are unallocated that are sitting in the interest in the foundation in those funds. Or, and he had mentioned also the general, but, you know, setting through here tonight, we don't, we don't want to have to consider that. But maybe accumulation of art and foundation interest funds.
There's.
But speak, you know, speaking for myself, I may, since it was brought up, is that, you know, my understanding is that the council requested from our department heads at a council meeting to put, to formulate a list of roads that they felt needed the most attention. And, you know, that's, that's, there's a lot of work that goes into formulating that, those, that kind of information. I mean, there's core samples that have to be taken from the roads. There's just a lot that goes into that. When that was, when they put together that list, they, because of, you know, how they've been, how they're managed by our office, instead of throwing that list to you, they evidently threw it to us. And when it was thrown to us, yeah, of course, we passed it. Now, speaking for myself, I had no idea you had not seen the list. I had no idea that there wasn't any discussion. But, you know, I understand where you're coming from. You have, you have, there should have been a conversation made, but I think with, with everything that's been, was, that's going on at that time during the summer, because I believe you originally was in late spring or early summer, you had the conversation with the department heads about the list.
I'm not sure exactly. Yeah, I believe.
But there's a lot that has been going on since then. So it's not, it's not surprising that either board kind of misstepped it, forgot to mention it. But, you know, with that said, I mean, I don't think, you know, Laura can certainly speak for herself, if the board fills in its infinite wisdom that it does not or should not at this time fund the roads, you're not going to hear me complain.
Yeah, and I think, to be clear, I, we are, we asked for the list because we suggested that we'd like to consider doing the same thing in 2022 that we did in 2021. And that was several months ago. And I think, but to Jeremy's point, I think the difficulty or I think the emphasis on that communication between both boards is the key. Because from that, from that request several months ago to the Development Department, we hadn't heard a word about it until the contract was set to be approved and awarded. And that's the kind of communication that if there's something that's happening, especially to tune at $2.7 million, which we all support, generally. And if that's happening, we should clearly be informed as to what that, what that plan is.
There's no, we have not sent out, we have not sent out RFPs. There's, we certainly haven't signed contracts to have that work being done.
It went out for bid and it was approved. The contract was awarded.
No, no.
You awarded it?
For $2.7 million.
I don't know how that's done without the council first approving the expenditure.
Well, that's part of our question.
It was in front of you guys opening bids and you guys approved it.
And they came back.
I think, I think.
Well, it was a breakdown of communication.
Yeah, I think that part of the problem that we have here is that there's, you know, like it or not, that there's somewhat of a transition taking place or has been taking place over the last several months.
Our usual channels of communication have broken down.
Right.
We have to build them back up again.
We have to figure out how to maintain them because elections happen every two years in county government. It's not four years, it's not six years, it's every two years. It's always a transition, always. We can't stop and pause. We've done way too much work over the last six years, just way, whatever, eight years, way too much work. And I think it's happened because we have communicated and we have come into some type of agreement on things. I just, I'm not, I didn't run for reelection at any point in time to sit up here and fight and not do anything. It's, there's, the county's growing. If we can't keep up with it, that's why, you know, I fully support whatever that, you know, that plans of continue to build out that building department, the planning, the bridges, the roads. If we don't stay with it, it's, look at the houses, look at Lake County right now. It's not slowing down anytime soon. For us to sit here and say now is not the time ever, or we can't, we have to figure it out. We got to continue to communicate with, the jail's going to be a building. I don't know what we're going to do, you know. I don't know if you guys have had conversations. I believe Skilman did go out there, do an assessment. I've never seen that. I don't know what the assessment said.
I don't think we have that back.
I don't, you know, and does that mean, and I know there's brief discussions about whether it's a work release, whether it's, you know, some type of, you know, mental health wing. To be honest with you, I've even heard some stuff recently about a morgue or something out there. Yeah, you know, we're going to turn it into, you know, I don't, so I, I don't know where that's coming from, you know. I know a lot of conversations with the coroner, so, but we're not going to have a very big window with that, with the jail, to figure things out coming up.
Right.
So, I mean.
Right, we're going to have to be, we're going to have to be locked and loaded with new projects at the time that that bond is retired in December. Or we'll lose that advantage.
That's right.
So as it relates to paving, we're hopeful and positioned to get the additional paving done yet this year.
Yeah, yeah, we're still in that window.
And, and that would be a significant boost to the overall paving program, similar to what we did in 2021. Do we, do you, do we have or do you know what the plan is for 2020? Has that paving plan been established? Or do we know what the plan is for '23 or '24?
Whether or not we're going to do this, we're going to recommend the same, have the same process.
I'm saying, I'm asking if there's a plan for 2023 relative to paving?
No. No, not outside of what we normally do. We have a plan, but, I mean, there's not, you know, that plan is to, you know, because we have all our roads graded out.
We use the pazer system.
Right.
And it goes through the highway engineer who we lost.
Systematically, there's got to be a list. I mean, we're systematically going through the worst roads.
Yes.
But it's, it's fluid. It's not like you have a list that doesn't change and you just add your roads onto the bottom. I mean, every winter, some take it worse than others. So it's, you know, it's, it's dynamic, a dynamic list, but they're rated. And when the time comes, they pull out the ones that need it the most.
And we've had those rated for probably better part of five or six years.
It's a constant, ongoing process.
Yeah. Because you, I mean, as you might imagine, you can rate something today and five years from now, that rating is totally, you know, totally inadequate, just in five years.
So the, the contract's been signed for the 2.7. We still apparently have to figure out how that's going to be paid for. And, and Jim, you outlined some options, some potential options, right? But in terms of figuring that out, it's going to have to be done pretty quickly because the season is getting shorter and shorter. So I don't know if we, when we come up with a plan to figure out how to pay for it, then, do we know when they're expecting to start work?
No, we would, no, we'd have to, once the money's available, that, and we make the phone call as to when, what the scheduling would be. And because we are so late in the season, I mean, if we would have a turn in the weather, say next week, we could miss it altogether. Now, that's not, nobody, I don't, I don't believe anybody's predicting that, that could happen.
So at this particular point, there's not a start date to that project?
No, no.
They're ready to go.
Yeah, you would never, we'd never request a start date without it being funded.
So something, if we're going to, because the whole wage committee with their recommendation, I think there was like $750,000, $60,000 of that, you know, which would be people who are, you know, to get everybody to $3,000, that will have to find a place to come up with that $760,000. Now, if that place is going to be the, you know, the 10,000, I mean, the 10 million from, that we held back from the ARPA is, you know, there's possibility then to use some of that for the raises, some of that for roads, some of that for health insurance. So, but I think that would then, us, an act of us passing it and you guys putting it into your plan.
But when you say raises, Jeremy, do you mean the one-time stipend?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, whatever the fiscal body of county government believes is in our best interest to do and how to, you know, in that vein, you know, and how to do it. I support that. No better than I would.
Relative to the other project that's out there regarding the Memorial Opera House, can you give some guidance on where, where you or the commissioner's office stands on to what degree that should be renovated, remodeled, if at all?
We don't agree on that.
But I, you know, and I, and I've stated it in commissioners' meetings, in public meetings, you know, I'm all in favor of fixing whatever's broken in that building. And if you evaluate or read that, the 2018 study that was done by Schmidt Associates, the architects who were hired to do the design, I mean, they state several times in the building, you know, that the building's in, you know, for the most part, the building's in good to okay shape. There's just, there's, there's parts of it that need, need some attention. And, and I agree with those who say that, you know, because it's in this historical structure that we have an obligation to make sure, you know, it's not going to fall apart. I totally agree with that.
Some of the parts that need attention are the bathrooms and you can't do anything with the, I mean, that's why the study has an extension, so we can move the bathrooms into a new part.
I just think that, yeah, I think that, I think that the issue here is you have people like myself who believe we should fix the Memorial Opera House. We should repair whatever is, needs repaired and what we can afford to repair. Then you have those who, who think that as well as they support the build out. And, you know, my position is, is that in the middle of a recession and runaway inflation and, you know, dealing with where are we going to, where are we going to find reoccurring revenue to address wage adjustments? Not just, not just stipends, but we're actually adjusting wages here, which we're going to have to do every year. And money's going to have to be available every year. We've heard some, from some folks about, you know, they're looking, looking at buying a bus that at one time was $80,000 because it was gas. Now, today, it's $250,000. And it's, it's all about, in my, you know, we have the, this, we have the center district garage we got to deal with. You all brought up what needs to be done in the jail. And that's, you know, whether it's better to, you know, we're doing something to the interior that better receive, you know, inmates that have mental health issues. Or whether it's work release. Or, somebody brought it up, the coroner's office. I don't know. But we're going to have to, as a body, we're going to have to come together and we're going to have to formulate a list of priorities, whether we like it or not. And that's what should drive our decisions. Because I'm going to have my opinion about something and I, Laura and I don't agree with the Opera House, but that's not to necessarily say that Laura's wrong. It's not necessarily say that I'm wrong. We have our, we have our opinions. And that's why all of you get to weigh in on it, just like all three of us get to weigh in on it.
But I think.
I think that's why we're asking for a sense of direction or a sense of feeling because that, collectively, you're right, we have to set up a list of priorities. And today, we really haven't shared with each other what those priorities should be or at what level each item is. And so that's what, I think part of what Jeremy's trying to get to in terms of that communication piece, because we have big projects that have to be taken care of, items that have to be addressed. And the only way to do it is if we talk collectively to, you know, try to figure it out. I mean, the other, the other issue out there, as you, as you talk specifically about the Opera House, and Jim, I appreciate your, your view on it, your opinion. If, if that is your view on it, have, has the commissioner's office had any discussion in terms of what would happen if we just fixed the Opera House? What would we do with the old sheriff's residence? Have we talked about that or come up with a plan relative to that?
No, no. No, there hasn't been. There has not been any long-term discussion about how to deal long-term with issues such as that.
That's correct.
But that's, but Mike, you're absolutely right. Like it or not, that building's ours. So what are we going to do with it? We going to level it? Are we going to improve it? Are we going to sell it?
Would you be in support of?
To include it in our expansion of the Opera House.
Yeah. Or including in the expansion of the Opera House. Right.
Would you be in favor of improving the old sheriff's residence?
Eventually, yes. I think we have to. If we're going to own it, we have to. We can't, you know, if I were Mayor Valparaiso, I wouldn't appreciate a county building that was falling in disrepair, you know, where the windows were knocked out of it. And, you know, I wouldn't appreciate that. And I don't think the county should let it get into that kind of shape. But again, we're only, we seen it here tonight, we're only capable of doing so much. We need to decide what that list is.
Amen.
There's a difference between, you know, that reoccurring expenses and capital projects. Commissioner, you know that. And it's, I think, we're talking, we continue to talk, and I think we have for years now talked about the same project. So the list of priorities, I haven't heard anything new over the last two years. It's.
It's all the same.
It's all the same stuff. It's just about moving forward on some of the stuff. And I thought we were moving forward on, you know, on the Opera House and that.
I would argue for it, but you've all heard it.
And we've all voted for it in favor of it. We, this, this body has spoke on that issue. There's no doubt. I think, I think it was clear, 7-0, this body supports doing that, that project at that scale that it was presented because then it opens the bathrooms up, you know, it gives.
We had 18,000, a population, county population of 18,000 and some people when it was originally built. And now we have 173,000. I mean, it.
To expand over into jail makes sense. To open the middle up to give room for people to move around when they enter, they're not jammed. I mean, it's used, I don't, what's the capacity in that place?
Um, three, three.
I mean, to jam them in to basically the council's office. Every time they come in is ridiculous.
With two or three women's restrooms. I don't know what's in the gentleman's, but it's very, very inadequate for anything in that building.
There's no office space, there's no coffin space, there's no breakout space.
And it's ours and it's, I don't think it's going anywhere. And it's just not about fixing it up. To me, it's about leaving something for the commissioner for the next 100 years, you know. I know you mentioned, well, we fixed it before. Well, Jesus, look at it today. Not very well, I should say, then. So.
Well, that was 20 years ago.
So I just, I think we have a lot in front of us and if we don't get moving on, on stuff like that, then, and I don't think, I don't think we're, we have a county with some cash. Do we have, do we have the reoccurring money? No, that's what, that's what we're kind of fighting for, the reoccurring money. But we do have some cash that we could, we could do capital stuff without borrowing, I believe. You know, I'm not in any, in my opinion anyways, any time over the next couple of years entertaining or voting for any kind of tax increase until inflation settles down, until we figure out, you know, have a plan for things. There's just no way. So, but I think, because, and I think we can survive over the next couple of years and do everything we've just talked about if we, if we talk to each other and plan things out. I think we can continue to pave roads at, you know, an increased pace. I think, you know, the bridges are fine, stormwater, look what we're doing over there. I think we can fix, expand, restore that Opera House, fix the center garage, do some serious stuff at the jail, whatever that means. We can do it all. But it's going to take us having honest conversations with each other and moving forward. So.
I, I could appreciate your, your, your vision about we can do. I, I, I could appreciate your, 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 your vision about we can do it all. I, I'm, I'm a little more concerned than that. Maybe I'm more of a pessimist than you are. But I, but I am. I'm more concerned as to whether or not we have the capability under the, under the current structure that we have to keep up with all of it.
We went through COVID and didn't slow down.
I know. But everything's-
What are we afraid of?
Everything slowed down. But, but Jeremy, you know that, I mean, we have a, we have a serious issue with our public safety systems here in our county, as far as the funding goes.
That's not the same money.
What's, what's underfunded right now? We tried, and we started with, with ambulance service. We know that. And we, we met, actually, Andy Bozek and I started having the conversation about fire territories. You know, there's perfect model in Balpo, you know, and I get to look at Portages and then look at Balpo's. What they have for their fire department and EMS is way more than Portage. Why? Because they went into that fire territory business. And they can get a, a new capital of cumulip fund for fire equipment. They consolidated, you know, it was, why wouldn't, before we went and ran out and said, we're gonna raise taxes, you know, because we just said that's the thing to do, why wouldn't we take a look at fire territories and see what it is for ambulance service around the county? And we tried, nobody wanted to sit down with us. But before we say, we're raising your taxes for, because we're underfunded, I mean, Chesterton. Chesterton hasn't even got rid of their 911. What is that, $500,000 savings there for them?
If they got rid of their police dispatch, probably. Probably.
Fire territories, getting rid of Chesterton, that, what, so before we just ring the bell, why aren't we looking at options then? You know?
Well, I think that the reason that there wasn't a lot of ballyhoo about looking into fire district, because if you, if those who have, those of us who have studied it understand at the end of the day, it's a tax increase. Any way you wanna cut it. It's gonna be a tax increase. In other words, if Chesterton was to go into a fire district with Liberty Township and Jackson and Pines, well, the taxpayers, the taxpayers of Chesterton are not going to eat building a new fire station somewhere, somewhere in the neighborhood area of Liberty or Jackson Township.
Come up with a uniform rate.
Right. Well, yeah, but it's still, it's still gonna be an increase. And that's what I think a lot of, I don't, I don't know of a, of a fire district created in the state that there, it didn't follow with a, a tax increase. And I'm not saying that that's necessarily a terrible thing if you're, you're looking at a better fire service and long-term, more effective and efficient fire service. But convince that, convince the property tax or, or the residents of our county that while we're in the throes of a recession.
I don't, you keep saying a recession, but I don't, so, but that's, isn't that what we're really focused on is ambulance service? Cause that's what we pay for in unincorporated areas. So that's our, that's our fix. Unless you're sitting there saying, we've gotta find the funding of ambulance service, but our sheriff's department is woefully underfunded?
No, I, I didn't say-
And that's why you're talking about a tax increase?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't say that the, the sheriff's department was woefully underfunded.
Those are our responsibilities right now. What's-
But, but, but we need to decide whether or not we're going to, you know, whether it's 911 or was the sheriff's department, you know, if, we're gonna continue to be a training ground for other departments to hire away from us.
Don't our sheriff's department, they get paid. They're one of the higher ones, aren't they?
Yeah, but you're compared to who? Here, in our county? Yeah, they are. But that's our county. And we're losing officers to, to, you know, to abutting counties. I mean, you know, I, I think, in my opinion, the least of our problems, folks, is that Opera House. Even if we funded it, it's the least of our problems. Our, 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 our biggest challenges are, are those that are facing us long-term. Not something that takes a check written and then it's solved.
So what are those long terms? And what is your, what is your suggestion on how to fix those? What are you talking about long-term?
Well, I think that, I think that, you know, you touched on it earlier. I think that there needs to be enhanced communication between the executive body of county government and the fiscal body of county government. And that those two boards formulate a list of priorities.
I think we've all, we've named them all. They're all the same.
Jeremy, that's, that stuff's gotta be written down and has to be explained. It's not just you and I that need to understand that. The public needs to understand that. Because it's, it's the public's money. So if the public is, 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 if the public is, is saying, well, why are you doing this and not this? Well, that's because what, this is what we decided to do. Well, when did we get the opportunity to weigh in on this?
Every election cycle, Jim. Every election cycle is when they weigh in.
But not only that, we've-
Every meeting, we have-
Our emails that we've had in response to, as an example, the Memorial Opera House. It's, when's it been? 20 to 1?
They weigh in.
21 to-
22 to 2.
22 to 2. They're in favor of what we are proposing.
No doubt, the public spoke on that. But-
I just, you know, going back to that, the study that Schmidt did, you know, within that, that study, and I don't know if, if all you folks even realize it, if you, if you, has everybody seen the 2018 study? Has everybody seen it?
I'm certain I've probably seen it, but-
Okay. Well, within that study, there's actually a section in capital, raising capital for, for that project.
How do they, how do they solve the problem of the restrooms in that study?
There is an addition between the buildings.
Oh, there was an addition?
Yes.
Between?
Between the two buildings. It didn't connect in that study.
Oh, okay.
But it was all the way-
I did see that.
Butting right up to-
Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't anything being done to the old jail or sheriff's residence. But there, there was actually a section in there where they were gonna raise nearly $3 million. What happened to that? What happened to that effort?
The foundation is still willing to wait, raise $2.5 million.
Well, I don't know why they're willing. I don't, I don't know why that process has not been kicked off years ago.
Because we haven't agreed on a plan. I mean-
We've been talking about this since 2018, at least since 2018.
Half of our board has been vehemently opposed to adding on to the place. Why would they, how can they ask people for money when we can't even say this is what we wanna do? We can't.
Jeremy, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna, this is gonna get solved tonight.
Mike's probably right.
We're kinda like-
Yeah, we've been here a while, but it, I, to me, it's a productive conversation on a-
Yeah, I was just gonna comment. I mean, I think we get involved in, we volunteer to get involved in politics to be problem solvers.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we can, we can all identify what the problems are. I think we've had a couple of options brought before the council and the commissioners on how to solve some of our challenges. But I guess, you know, is this something kind of putting back? I mean, I hear a lot of, you know, you're identifying what the problems are, but how do, you know, how do we move forward to our communication to solve these challenges? And, you know, every challenge, it's an opportunity to communicate better. But we can go on and, but, you know, anybody can say what we need to do. But I guess what, you know, I'm kinda asking what coming, you're telling us what we need to do and what we need to spend money on and what we need to fix, but I don't hear any solutions. I don't hear any alternatives other than we don't do anything. I, that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Well, the, the, well, I am offering solutions, Mike.
I haven't heard any solution.
Well, the solution is-
Communicate better.
The, the-
That's, that's the solution I hear.
The solution, Mike, is to proceed with caution. Err on the side of caution when it comes to spending.
That's not, that's not a revelating statement. I think that we all are here to spend taxpayer money wisely.
Well, it's a, it is a statement. It is-
But we're here to accomplish things during the time we hold these seats, not to just be caretakers, but to, you know, accomplish things, spend our money wisely instead of just identify the problems. And that's what I hear. You're listing all these problems that we need to do, but I don't hear any, I don't hear any solutions coming from that side.
I think I just offered one, Mike.
Be cautious.
Yeah, about how you spend money.
I think this council has, if you look at the fund balances, I think this council has absolutely done that. And I don't think this council's gonna make decisions that's gonna put this county, you know, in any kind of financial jeopardy. And if, if we support a project, I think we've done our due diligence on it. And I think we've talked to the, the auditor's office, we've talked to each other, we've talked to people. We, this, tell me one time this council made a bad decision that has put this county in jeopardy.
Well, Jeremy, I'm not, I, I have not stated that I think the council's made a bad decision. What I'm saying is, is that, as I stated earlier, in the throes of runaway inflation, and I know that you don't like the word recession, and with, you know, struggling to do this or just struggling to do that, I've got to be able, if I'm going to sign off on a 700, last count, a $7.5 million expenditure, I'm not gonna do it unless I can explain to the public who puts me in the seat that it was the smartest thing for us to do it this time.
Jim, I've got a question. If, say, 7.5 million, if the council, if we came up with half and the foundation came up with the other half, would that be an agreeable situation this way? Everyone's got skin in the game and the taxpayers know that everybody is in this together.
Two and a half million.
I'm sorry?
They've agreed to raise 2.5 million. I don't-
Well, with the increase, if, if they were to, just out of curiosity, if they were to increase that, just saying if, would that be acceptable? Would that, would that at least bring us to the table of the possibility of making this happen? Or at least seriously looking into it versus, you know, yes, no kind of a thing? That's all I'm asking. Is it possible?
Well, I think anything's possible, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of loose ends there. There, you know, we all have to understand that, this, this just, for argument's sake, say we move forward with this. I, I'm not about to agree to, to spending $7.5 million of the public's money. And by the way, I'll go on record saying that before that's all done, it's gonna be a lot more than that. With, with-
This rate.
Without the understanding that that building's gonna be used by the public.
I think that's the point, is opening that up to make it a true, a larger community center.
All I've heard is, is it being used by the Opera House.
I would agree with you. If that's the reason they're opening the, the old jail up over there, that it, that it would absolutely be a community center. Serbia keeps pounding that in my head. We, that the purpose was to be a community center. So why wouldn't if an organization wanted to use some space and they have the right to?
Well, it would be an opportunity to open a new avenue for children in the county to participate also in-
Here's another-
They have children's programs, but they have to rent space outside of-
Would, would you be willing to sit, if people were to meet from the Opera House, from the council and yourself, would you be willing to meet, sit at a table and have a discussion?
Oh, absolutely. I wanna hear, I wanna hear the offer. And I wanna take the offer back to the public and ask them what they think.
Allowing the other group to do the same thing, cause you're-
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
What is that, I don't even know what that means, Jim, because you're elected to make decisions. And if they don't like, I mean, so, so what? You, what does that even mean? You show up at a, at a meeting, one of your meetings, you ask the public? Or what do you, you have a forum?
Sure, we, we announce at our, we announce at our meeting, we're gonna discuss it.
And you pack a room, yeah, it's not-
We've done this.
Yeah, right. We, we've done that. So anyways, yeah.
And I'm gonna take it away from the Opera House discussion for a moment, because I think we've talked about that ad nauseam over the year. But, and I, and I wanna just ask Commissioner Biggs, you know, in the spirit of the, you know, cautious spending, as, as you, as you've suggested, and the runaway inflation and the recession looming, and we're, what we're also wrestling with as a council, and that's, that's why I can, I'd appreciate your input or guidance. I mean, right now, we're wrestling with the distribution of the remaining ARPA money, appropriating that money. And as it stands today, I think, you know, there's $8.9 million specifically that's, you know, been proposed to appropriate for nonprofit organizations and the mental health groups. So, in the spirit of what you've said, I mean, do you, would you think it would, it's wise for us at this point to pull the trigger on that $8.9 million distribution?
Yes. That money, that was, that ARPA money was never, ever meant when it was sent down to local units of government from the US Treasury's office, was never, ever meant to, to supplement, you know, operations, day-to-day operations in any local unit, unit of government.
Day-to-day, I would agree, but I, I would say from an infrastructure perspective, if you talk about roads and you talk about stormwater, you see that most, almost all communities are taking a pretty aggressive approach to those items-
Right.
As opposed to outside organizations.
Right. And we, we have taken the lion's share of what has been given to us, which is roughly 30 million, 33 million, somewhere in there, and spent it on, we've spent it in county government. You know, we, we tend to, and I just had this conversation with somebody, we tend to forget that these nonprofits are picking up ball and running with that we don't have to run with. But if they drop it and walk away, it's gonna be laying at our feet to run with. So it's not like we're handing this out for people to have a party with. They are filling a void here. That we, if they weren't here, we would have to fill. We're not, in, in, in no way, shape, or form, or anybody's definition, should anybody believe that handing that money to the nonprofits, as we did through the process, that we all agreed to, and about as fair as, as anything we've ever done up here, thinks that any of that is wasted. That they, they all pay, play a key role in the quality of life that we have, that we've come to expect here in Porter County. And I, I get where you're coming from. It is, it is so easy. I've set, set where you're setting for five years. I get where you're coming from. But we, we did the absolute right thing with that money. And I think if any, we've done any, of all the things we've done here in the last, you know, four or five years, that to me is the, I am the most proud of. Because it would have been so easy to just say, nah, we're not gonna, no, go away. We're gonna, we're gonna fix this here and fix this here, and that makes us look good. There's an election coming up, that'll make me look good. Instead, you know, we didn't do that. We, we did the right things. And from what I, from what I see with most of the municipalities, at least locally, they did too. No, I don't, I don't know of anybody who spent it all on themselves.
I think most, all of them spent, majority of it on themselves, absolutely.
I'm, who? I, I'm not a, I'm talking about this county.
Chesterton. Where did, who did Chesterton give to? Who did Portage give to? Who did Couts give to?
I, I don't know. I, I don't-
Yeah, you can't-
I'm not, you, you can be right, Jeremy. I'm just saying, I'm proud that we didn't do that.
Yeah, and I'm not here to suggest that we did, we're doing the wrong thing with that. And I, I just want to present that as something that as a council, we're struggling with. And in large part, because of all the additional issues and problems that, that you specifically have brought up, that need to be addressed. And we ultimately need to come up with some sort of a plan or vision in terms of how it, how it should be done.
And Mike, anything that I brought up in that op-ed should have been obvious to anybody sitting up here. I mean, that, that's been a secret.
Because it's the same things we've been talking about for years.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so, you know, I'm, what I'm saying is, is that if you, we can't make an argument that we're all good here. We're gonna, you know, we're gonna take care of all of our problems. We're, we're good here. And then at the same time, have the same argument that, well, I don't know if we can give this art money away. I think we need to spend it on ourselves to fill some holes. You can't have it both ways. We are, we either are solvent here and we're on the right track here, or we're not. And if we're not, then you, then your, then your, your question becomes golden. Can we afford to do that?
I think it's, Jim, I think what you're, what you're saying is, yes, we can. I think we're in good shape. But we also have heard, the, the new veterans officer came up, says 17% of veterans in, in this county are, only receive, you know, services from them. And holy crap, that was an easy one. Why don't we give that guy some money, art money, to go out and, you know, promote his department?
Mm-hmm.
There's another one. The sheriff needed a, a SWAT vehicle. There's $300,000. We heard from the parks, and all of a sudden, it, I don't think it's anything monstrous, but it starts to add up. We're about ready to push out $9 million and our park's newest vehicles are 2005.
And much of what you brought up, Jeremy, is, you know, is qualifies for grants if we, if somebody just get off their ass here and apply for it.
We have a grant writer.
Well, I'm just saying, that, that a lot of what you just brought up is, you know, can be addressed with grants.
So, I mean, you've been in that office, though. You're a commissioner. Have you not sought out those grants?
We have a grant writer.
I'm just, look, if, the whole purpose of inviting me here tonight is to, is to drill me on the Opera House, let me just, let me.
We passed that up already.
Just, just, just let me say this. Look, I don't want a single project, even though that project runs into millions, to be the wedge in between me and this board. And I'm willing to sit down and talk about, to find out or to pound out some kind of solution to this, this issue. And if, if you think it looks too much like a pair of work boots, then don't do it. But I'm willing to give my time and my energy. If you want to sit down, you want to talk about it, you know, it's the first time I heard that they're willing to raise two and a half million dollars. Nobody was sharing that information with me.
Well, Jim, I don't think, I'm pretty sure I look down both ways. There's not a person up there that's not afraid to put work boots on and work. And you've seen that, we're here for five and a half hours later. And, and I appreciate that you, you're coming tonight and having a conversation, you know?
Yes.
Not hiding behind an op-ed and let's do this face-to-face in public and have these, have these conversations. So, but going back to it, and that's why Mike is 100% right, and, and Brickner, Sylvia, I've, actually, all of them I've talked to. This is a tough decision because it, it's, they continue to pile up these little things that if we shove out $8 million, $9 million in nonprofits, I mean, you're saying, you know, have a grant writer get off their ass or whatever. I don't know what you're talking about exactly, but that doesn't solve the fact that the veterans guy could use $25,000, $50,000 to reach out to veterans. That the sheriff's department can't use $300,000, maybe for tasers, vests, guns, cameras. You know, the parks department.
With a bus or two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Amen on that, another one. But we, so for us to take a step back, to me, this council is doing their job before we, and then the, I don't know, explain how we, here's $8, $9 million to all these nonprofits. And again, you saw tonight, we give $2 or $3 million every year out to nonprofits, right? To social service organizations, and we're going to continue to do that. But here's $8 million and then you stand up and email us that you're proposing a, a public safety tax increase. You were talking about public perception.
Say that again?
If we hand out $8, $9 million to non-county government entities and then a year later, you're proposing to raise taxes. How does that fly?
Well, it flies, that money, Jeremy, that money that was handed out by the federal government, the art funds, was never meant to make us whole. To make units of government whole. That's not, go back and read the U.S. Treasury's recommended uses.
I think the U.S. Treasury adjusted at the end there and said.
They talk about businesses, they talk about nonprofits, they talk about individuals.
Then they made their final rule.
Yeah. It said, 10 million, you can spend on yourself any way you want. And say all of it.
I'm going to suggest that the dialogue, dialogue has started, which is great. But I think in the spirit of it's potentially a record-setting late.
Five hours.
Meeting, that we, the discussion goes in recess and we continue it. And I think the, to, to circle back to the original point is that without communication and cooperation between these two boards, nothing's going to get done.
I, I agree, I've seen it.
In the spirit of collaboration and cooperation, and that's what we have so successfully done over the last seven and a half years, seven and a half years plus now. And that's why we have been able, and we've been put in a position to do more in the last seven and a half years than the prior 20-plus in my mind. And I stand, I stand behind that. And that's because we've got people in the commissioner's office that can work together and come up with a vision, a plan, can present it to the council. The council is united in terms of reviewing what, what could and should be done with the finances that, you know, that we've been given. And then collectively, the two boards work together and move things forward. And so I think that's, in the spirit of opening the dialogue, is to say that that's what's been happening for the last seven and a half years. And that's what, if we intend to get anything accomplished over the next four to eight years, that's exactly what's going to have to happen. And, and I think we're committed to doing it. And, and our hope is that, that the commissioner's office is as well.
Sure we are. And we've also, as Jim pointed out, going through a transition and we'll get a new person in about a month. And now I think it's going to help.
But we can't stop governing, like I said.
No, no, no. But it'll reset the playing field and.
But we're going to, yeah, and I, Laura makes a, a great point. I mean, we're going to, we're going to have a new commissioner. And you could very likely have two new board members up here. And I think that, that those, those people should be given the opportunity to weigh in on this. That they, that they need to be part of this conversation because, as you pointed out, Mike, this is, this is something that's going to be over the next, you know, two to eight years that's going to be going on, whatever decision.
But we can't stop working and waiting for somebody to take office. That was never, we've never done that.
No, no.
Never.
And then hopefully, hopefully.
We're talking, what, 60 days?
Might as well, we might as well not even get together the last six months every two years.
We can't wait 60 days. We've got to get moving on a couple of things.
Jim, this ARPA money, the, all of the nonprofits are waiting to know what we're going to be doing. What, you know, everybody is wondering. And I am so happy with what you guys did tonight. Look what we accomplished with the budget, just with cooperation.
I, I think, I think.
Truthfully, I, I think we should talk more, keep it open. We don't have to wait 60 days. Keep, just like we've started now, an open conversation. If you will continue to work with Jeremy and Mike, I think it'd be a wonderful thing for the people.
I get paid to do that. And I'm going to do that.
Good.
But it would go a long way, and I don't mind telling you all, it'd go a long, long way. You release that, those ARPA funds to what the committee has decided is to where it needs to go.
That might be.
That, that sends me a strong message.
But we've never given up our right to take a last vote on it. And we're going to the budget session, looking at things that we could throw in that. I mean, nobody's saying we're not going to, but I think the timing of us listening to the department heads and looking at other things that we could push in there, it's.
No, that's, that's your, yeah, I mean, it's, that's your decision.
So.
But we need your help.
So I, so I think that to wrap, hopefully wrap this up.
I'm trying.
The, you know, the, and hopefully, as we're good with the conversation, I'd hopefully you, you two are as well. And again, our goal is to, you know, work together. And, and, you know, to be, to be frank, I mean, the, the $2.7 million paving plan that we didn't hear hide nor hear of, that, that was alarming. And so I think we, you know, fairly had some questions about what the heck was going on. And that's why we wanted to.
I don't disagree with you. It is, it was, it is alarming. And it should not have happened.
Right.
But Jeremy, may, may I say this real quick? You know, and I don't, I don't, I don't bring this up because I do and you don't. But, but I have more years in, in county government than anybody sitting up here or anybody on the Board of Commissioners. And I, when I'm, and like I said, I've sat there five years where you're sitting right now. You clearly have a responsibility that I don't have. And the three of us have a responsibility that you don't have. And if we never forget that, and we respect that, and we're willing to communicate, we, we can accomplish a lot.
As long as we accomplish a lot, and I would go back and finish this. We're very fiscally conservative up here, this council has always been. And that's why we haven't raised taxes. That's why we haven't added to the burden of the taxpayer. But that's why we do have fund balances. Yes, our auditor's office has been key, instrumental in, in putting us in this position to where we can continue to accomplish a lot and be fiscal responsible and not be an additional burden to the taxpayer. We're, we're, we're in a great spot. Yes, the, we're always putting a sense of alarm out there to our department heads, for certain. But we're not laying people off. We're fighting to give out record raises, really, is what we're doing. So it's, well, it's going to happen because of the rebalancing, but.
And what I'd like to do, I'd like, I'd like to thank everybody that stayed the entire night.
God bless your soul.
You deserve some sort of, some sort of reward. And also specifically for our nonprofit partners that.
Jesus.
Sat through the very end and we promised that you'll never have to do that again, yet after the meeting, you stayed even afterward. So they will leave at the, at the end. But Opportunity Enterprises, Porter Stark, the Council on Aging, the Family Youth Bureau Services that we've had a, a history of continuing to support and appreciate the work that you do. And we can't thank you enough for that, for that work. And, and tonight, your patience, frankly. So I don't know if we have anything to do, is there anything else to discuss or are we?
Adam, all right, are we good? You can crunch these numbers and prepare us for a final reading.
Exactly. So what do you have left, just final reading? Was this the last?
Final reading, but we're, you know, we've got, we've got some cutting to do on final reading a little bit. So, yeah, we just got to button it up. I don't, because of you guys' help.
Getting close.
We're close. So I think we'll get there next Tuesday. It'll be fun. We're going to make some people really happy, we're going to make some people really sad. So, but, all right, we good? Can I go home?
Yes. You've got the gamble.
Thank you.
Oh, you want a public comment?
No. Take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.